It is now 5:00 PM, November 5th, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as housing assets accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
Here. I must remind our speakers that your time limit will be three minutes. And now at this time, can we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have three items this evening. The first item, Item A, is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. The property and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. Item B is pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The case name and the case number is all set forth on the agenda. The last item is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4. And that pertains to one potential case. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it either at the close of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular six o'clock session.
Thank you. And we do have one card. Regina Wetherspoon Bell?
Hi Regina.
Thank you for the opportunity to come in and speak to you this evening. I'm here on behalf of the Dreamers, Visionaries, and Leaders Project to extend to the mayor and all of the council members an invitation to see the biopic Harriet on November 19th at Just Ran Cinemark. DVL is hosting a private screening of that film, and we thought it would be appropriate to invite you and hopefully for you to join us because earlier this year, we dedicated the plaque to Harriet Tubman at the Civil Rights Memorial here in the city of Victorville. Also, I think it's interesting for you to know that there will be approximately 60 students from across the high desert that will be joining us for the private screening of that film. So I've left some invitations for you. I definitely hope to hear back that if not all of you, the majority of you, will take us up on the invitation and join us for that special screening. So thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and you have a lovely, lovely evening. Thank you Regina. And now we will recess to a closed session and a regular session convenes at 6:00 PM. Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:03, November 5th, 2019. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as housing assets accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
I'll be here in a moment.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Jones?
I'm sorry, here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
At this time, can we have our closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had three items this evening. The first was real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 54956.8. And the property and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. Second item was pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. The case name and case number is set forth on the agenda. And lastly, was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D4. And again, that information is on the agenda. At this point, there is no reportable action with respect to any one of those items.
This evening, the invocation will be delivered by Elder John Toomey of Calvary Chapel, Victorville, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger. So please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious Father in heaven, you are holy and true. We invite your spirit here tonight. You are the God of grace and compassion. You personally work in your creation. We thank you for blessing our nation. Because of you, we are greater than all other nations. Thank you for the different levels of government, especially the city of Victorville. Please continue to protect and prosper our city. Thank you for each of our elected officials. Tonight's agenda is ready, yet I pray that your good and perfect will will be done. I ask for your Holy Spirit to impart each council member wisdom to know the full truth and have the confidence and courage to make the right decision for the betterment of our city. I pray that you would restrain any motive that would be egocentric. I ask for your spirit to help each person who will be speaking in this public forum to communicate their thoughts with clarity, and please help the hearers to correctly understand. I would also ask, Lord, that you would help each person to hold the other person in high regard and due respect, lest we forget the words of Jesus, who gave us the two greatest commandments, when he said, "You shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your mind, and with all your strength, and you shall love your neighbor as yourself." There is no other commandment greater than these. Lord, we are all neighbors here, trying to make our city better. We need you. Thank you again for sending your Holy Spirit to help us and guide us into all truth. I pray all of this in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
So I will have our city clerk present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda.
The City Council welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item will be requested to submit a speaker card to any sheriff's deputy attending the meeting prior to the public comment or before an agenda item is discussed. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council, not to the members of the audience. Persons should not approach the dais unless authorized to do so by the presiding officer. In accordance with state law, the City Council may not discuss or take action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a City Council meeting by interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the presiding officer. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution. There are no revisions to report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, any items on this agenda that might be a conflict of interest to any council member, board member should be identified at this time. Do we have anything that's conflicting with our agenda from anyone? No? So we move on. We have no appeal hearings this evening. Therefore, we move on to public hearings. And we start with Item B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville regarding employer-employee relations. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the City Council conduct the public hearing introduced for first reading ordinance number 2396, establishing employer-employee relations policies and procedures, rescind resolution 05-79, adopting procedures for the administration of employer-employee relations, and schedule the second reading to adopt ordinance number 2396 for November 19th, 2019.
Thank you. At this time, council members, are there any questions of staff? You have a three-minute time limit. Any questions? Anyone? No?
Yes. So I'm reading in the discussion report that's this item, that the city's labor relation legal council was contacted by city staff. It's not my understanding that the person that sits to my right is necessarily the city's labor relations, and it doesn't specify in the reporting if it is indeed Mr. DeBrynowski or someone else. I'd like clarification for that.
The city retains labor relations council that is not the city attorney. It's an outside firm.
Do you have the information about the firm that you have contacted? Because this is news to me that we even had a city's labor relations legal council.
The city has worked with the firm of Best, Best &amp; Krieger for quite some time for labor relations matters.
And in this reporting is not necessarily saying how, I know it's since 2005, the employee-employee relations. And I'm wondering, since 2005, what has transpired that we are looking at in 2019 for something new to be occurring with this ordinance, since it's not transparent to me in my readings of this article?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'll eventually defer some of the better detail to Deputy City Manager George Harris. But I think the simple answer to the difference between the resolution and the ordinance that you're actually adopting tonight is the resolution sets and establishes policies that are certainly old and maybe not exactly compliant with the laws and practices today. So effectively, this ordinance is going to be making our process much more current with established rules with that. George, is there anything more to add?
Yeah, just to add on to that, it has been some time since the City Council has needed to utilize any of these rules. The last time was prior to 2008, when we actually did have an organized employee group that was representing the fire employees. And so now that we have our own in-house, it's probably wise that these rules and regulations be updated to include substantial changes that have taken place in state law over the last, actually, as well as case law has made some changes to what these rules represent just recently in the past two to three years. So primarily with the Janus case regarding organized labor, being able to opt out of being represented. So that was not reflective in our prior rules, as well as certain rules regarding how in past procedures are to be handled. That has changed over the last four to five years. And so it's just imperative that it's necessary for us to update these rules and regs to reflect those changes.
Okay. And Mr. Messler, you use the word practices. I'm presuming when you use the word practices, perhaps there's a legal rendition of any case or any statute? If that wasn't how you were trying to contextualize it, did you necessarily mean the word practice as status quo dealings and past procedures, or was it more legalistic in base?
Practices more in the sense of how we operate.
Thank you. No further questions.
Anyone else? I do not have any speaker cards, therefore... At this time, I open the public hearing. I'm sorry, I'm skipping over that. I opened the public hearing, and I do not have any speaker cards for this item here. Therefore, I close the public hearing, and I will request our city clerk to read the title of ordinance number 2396, please.
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville regarding employer-employee relations.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council introduce for first reading ordinance 2396, establishing employer-employee relations policies and procedures, rescinding resolution 05-79, adopting procedures for the administration of employer-employee relations, and to that it schedule the second reading to adopt ordinance 2396 for November 19th, 2019.
Thank you. Need a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B2, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against an amendment to the Victorville Municipal Code with an environmental exemption, introducing various amendments within Chapter 5 of Title 16, adopting state mandated 2019 Title 24 building codes. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the City Council conduct the public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding ordinance number 2397 and the municipal code amendment, and introduce and waive further reading of ordinance number 2397, which includes various amendments to Chapter 5 of Title 16 of the City of Victorville Municipal Code regarding the adoption of state mandated building codes.
Thank you. Council members, any questions of staff at this time? Three-minute time limit. Ms. Jones, you have anything?
None, thank you.
No questions at this time?
Yes. Is this item only in relation to state mandated codes being updated, or are there other procedures being done that the recommendation and discussion do not explicitly reveal?
This is just updating the state mandated codes.
Okay. And has the city in the past or currently considered workshops to apprise not only the council members, but our constituency of state mandated building codes?
I have not, because these are the minimum standards that the state requires.
It should be noted, Councilmember Gomez, that at least we've had a public deliberation through the Planning Commission. So we have, in fact, dealt with it publicly, and there it was approved before coming to you. So we've at least had the public workshops. I don't know what the state process is, but I suspect they've got a process as well before they adopt their state law.
Since the state mandated codes have been brought to the Planning Commission, and now they're coming for approval for the general council, does this have anything to do with SB 2?
No.
Thank you. No further questions.
Does anyone have any questions? No? Thank you very much. At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And I'm asking our city clerk to please read the ordinance number 2397.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville amending Title 16 of the Victorville Municipal Code, case number PLAN 19-00040, introducing various amendments with Chapter 5 of Title 16, adopting state mandated 2019 Title 24 building codes.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion in a second?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. So I'd like to let the public know that although we're looking at these state mandated building codes, I've had several local developers come up to me personally and tell me how difficult and the red tape is to go into our permitting processes, specifically for Hispanic communities that are trying to open up business in here. And I'm sure it's not the state putting these mandates because they're very vague, but the city has put a lot of red tape to particular categorical types of buildings, which are Hispanics. So I would appreciate that when we streamline, we streamline everything to be equal. And if it's perhaps the ignorance of a specific group not understanding what is happening through their permitting process, that our staff take consideration through Keith Messler. I'm not directing staff to do anything. It's really Keith Messler and the council who can do something of this nature. But our streaming process has been very difficult for a lot of our developers here locally. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Any further comments? Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I have to say that I'm awfully sorry that we have a council member who is so negative and so against everything that this city is trying to do. Keep that in mind, we have elections coming up soon. Item B3, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending the Victorville Municipal Code relating to the city's acceptance of lien agreements as securities for subdivision improvement agreements and adoption of an environmental exemption. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
That the City Council open and conduct the public hearing, close the public hearing, make the environmental exception finding, introduce ordinance number 2398 for adoption in first reading by title only, and waive further reading in full of proposed ordinance number 2398.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff at this time from council members? Anyone?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, just if I might, and it kind of speaks to the last item, but I think it provides a good segue into this item where I can then defer to Brian's. I think this is an item that does require a little bit of conversation. But I think in the most classic sense, despite the comment made previously about streamlining, this is a classic example of Victorville having focused so hard over the last couple of years in making its process much simpler for the development community to actually do business with us. This is another example of where we've looked at certain impediments, certain areas that make the process more difficult. And this is an item particularly that helps make it simpler, more compatible for the development community, so that they can actually, in this particular case, build homes in our community. You know, the one thing that in the last item that you likely would have seen in the staff report, because it was fairly well laid out, some of those things that a lot of people will complain about are effectively passed through by the state building code. And particularly, there's one item in the state building code that goes into effect January 1st that we have to pass on as a part of our municipal code amendment, is the requirement that all new homes be built with solar. Whether you agree or disagree with that, it does become a function of added cost to the homes that are being built. And in an environment where we're supposed to be focused on promoting affordability, it seems somewhat contrary to that goal when the state in itself is pushing these mandates down to us locally, affecting the building costs and effectively rendering affordability much more attainable, or unattainable, I should say. This item, for example, we believe helps in that overall equation and allows developers to have additional life in the tentative tract converting to recorded map stage. And with that, this item focuses particularly on the lien agreements that we have, streamlining the language in our lien agreements to make them more realistically usable by the developers. So with that, I'll allow Brian to offer some comments as to this item.
Thank you.
I'll try to keep my comments somewhat brief. This revision to the ordinance was a collaborative effort. Actually, representatives from the development community, including the BIA, asked if we could make some revisions to our ordinance to make it a little easier to record track maps. One of the requirements for recording a track map is there has to be security for the public improvements, and that can be a lien on the property. In our current ordinance, the value of the land has to be at least equal to the cost of the required improvements. One of the major revisions is that that requirement will no longer be in place. So it will make it a little bit easier to meet the requirement for recording a map with just a lien on the property for security. At such time that they want to pull a permit to construct the public improvements, then they would have to substitute the lien on the property with bonds. And so I've thought about this a lot, and I don't really think it's any additional risk to the city or to the public, and I think it's a good accommodation for the developer. And another change was there was a longer life to the lien agreement. With extensions, it could be as long as 10 years. The other, there are other revisions, but they're more minor. Those are probably the two major revisions.
Thank you. Yes.
Well, I would think this revision to our ordinance would make it easier to record a track map, which essentially would lock in their entitlement. And so they could wait until such time that the property would be ready to develop, and when they wanted to move forward and start building homes. So in that respect, I think it could accommodate future development.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. So it wasn't too long ago that this council adopted an ordinance very similar to the one that we're seeing before us. So I'm presuming, based on the status quo of doing business as usual, that's a mentality that I've seen adhere to here with the executive administration, that this item enhances the lien and the sub-improvement agreements. I just want clarification for that last portion.
It's, I would say it's a modification to our ordinance that allows, it essentially makes it easier to meet the security requirement for recording a map.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I have no questions.
Thank you. I think we have no other questions. At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do have one card.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, members of the City Council, good evening. I am Roman Nava. I am Director of Government Affairs for the Building Industry Association of Southern California, Baldi View Chapter, representing the 1,100 members that make up the home industry from KB Home down to the mom and pop plumbers. We have them all. And I would just like to thank the council for reviewing this particular ordinance. We did send a letter to City Manager and to the Assistant City Manager, and I hope that it was in your agenda this evening, and I'd just like to read it for the public. Over the past year, the BIA Baldi View Chapter has worked with the city's community development department on the proposed amendments to the code section 17.640.060. I'm going to, the other two, we won't have to worry about because it's a long one. Basically, the city's acceptance of lien agreement as securities for subdivision improvements. BIA is fully supportive of the proposed amendments outlined in the staff report that the improvement of the city's existing policy to allow lien agreements as securities for subdivision improvements. We commend the city of Victorville for their collaborative and transparent approach in amending this policy and view it as a significant economic development tool to address the state and regional housing crisis, which you just mentioned right now. We look forward to continued our long and productive working relationship with the city. Sincerely, Carlos Rodriguez, who's our CEO for the BIA. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to address this body tonight.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate it. At this time, I close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, will you please read the title of ordinance number 2398?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville amending section 17.64.060, 17.64.065, and 17.92.60 of Title 17 of the Victorville Municipal Code relating to the city's acceptance of lien agreements as securities for subdivision improvement agreements.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda, specifically points three through five.
I second that.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Well, first of all, I really like...
Well, first of all, I really like the work that's been done on this. I think it, to our credit, we've all worked together to identify the pain points and our ability to attract developers, and we're taking steps to resolve them. This is a great example of how great collaboration works, where parties are working together to bring forward ideas that benefit all, and I think that this does precisely that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. So I'd just like to bring it up to the attention of the public, and for the record as well. It has taken a gentleman, a local developer, who's developed not only here but in various counties, Riverside, San Bernardino County, LA County, two and a half years. That's too long, where it should take no more than six months, where it has to others. I'm not sure what is going on, but I've told this gentleman that if the process is not expedited, I am willing to sit during his interview with staff and see what is the issue. And to date, it has not moved forward. Our codes have made it very difficult for addressing the housing crisis, and I'm happy that there's a law in place that you would notice is SB two that comes from the state to help with the housing crisis. Recently, about a month ago, I became aware that about certain council members and executive administrations do not want the building of complexes or buildings to be built, which is a language that's being used. The language that's being used for that to be not the case is we increment more landscape, we start saying more amenities need to be used, which is a good narrative to look at aesthetic, to live in aesthetically pleasing building or house or community. However, what that ends up doing to our developers who want to stop that housing crisis and develop more housing for people that need the housing is they're not able to build, and when they're not able to build, they leave our communities. And when they do build, the cost goes to you, the house payer, the property renter. And I don't think that's a goal that we're having to eschew people from here because of that being the case. Costs would be passed to our renters, like I said, property owners, making it nearly impossible for local developers to address a housing crisis. However, SB two has alleviated some of these issues, and it's now up to us, the city with that local partition, to be able to make it. And if we don't do that, in eight years, the city will be sued. So I'm glad that we're doing something.
Any further comments? Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar, item C one through C 13 may be approved with one motion. I need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. So I move that the council and the various boards of directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the consent calendar.
Second.
And I have two questions on two items that I'd like to address before this gets approved.
I have a con-
You'd have to get us-
Yeah.
Sure that I don't vote on those minutes because I was not here. C one.
You can still vote on that if you've read the minutes.
I know, I've read the minutes, and I agree, but I still want to abstain.
Okay. Okay.
So I'd like to pull just for comment, and I'd like to receive a couple of answers for C 12 and C 13.
What?
If you want to pull the item, that needs to be a motion, and it needs to be seconded. It's up to the presiding office. If you want to just entertain a couple of questions, that may be the simplest way to do this.
Which items are they?
To ask questions on, what numbers are those?
C 12 and C 13.
C 12 and C 13.
I need to have a motion to pull those items?
I make a motion to pull item C 12 and C 13 for discussion.
A second?
I second it.
A motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez to pull item C 12 to C 13.
Those items can move to-
No, we have to take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So my-
Those two items will need to move to the back of the written items, the end of written.
Do you have a motion to approve all except those two?
Yes.
Yeah, we need a motion.
So we actually need to do a substitute motion because the original motion, actually, I don't know that it was seconded. Was my motion seconded?
I don't believe so. I think it's time for just a motion now to approve everything but C 12 and C 13.
Do we need a second?
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones.
For the record, Ms. Gomez is leaving the dais.
Seconded by-
I want it on record.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox, to approve item C one through C 13, except with C 12 and C 13. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Cox abstaining from C one.
I want it on the record that I am putting in for C 12 and C 13 as a public member to speak on that.
It doesn't indicate here what you're speaking on.
C 12 and C 13.
C 12 and C 13 will be moved to the end of written.
Not as a public member, it's not. You can move it as a council. You're more than free to do that.
Yeah, I think it's time to move on to D one now.
We move on to written communications, and we start with item D one. Approval of execution for a developer-funded project to expand electric services for building 518. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the execution of a developer-funded project to expand electric services located at 13236 Mustang Street, Suite 100, Victorville, California 9394, and 13236 Mustang Street, Suite 200, Victorville, California, also known as building 518.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff? Three-minute time limit. Ms. Jones, do you have any question? I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor. How about you, Ms. Ramirez?
No questions at this time.
Okay. I do not have any speaker cards for these items, for this item here. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Move the, council adopt the recommendations of staff on item D one.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D two, adopt resolution authorizing application SB two planning grant. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution number 19-087, authorizing the city manager or the city manager's designee to apply for the California Department of Housing and Community Development Senate Bill two Planning Grants Program in the amount of $310,000, and if awarded, authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the standard agreement.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff? Three-minute time limit. I'll start with Ms. Jones. I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I have no questions at this time.
Ms. Gomez?
I noticed that you created projects and labeled them as such. I attended the Long Beach League of California Cities Meeting, particularly for SB two on housing and the housing crisis. And it's my understanding that there are a lot of cities, such as ours, that makes it a little bit difficult for the housing to be developed. And so some of the things were like the bureaucratic red tape that we're seeing in a lot of cities. And one of my questions was for city staff to explain to me specifically what we're doing to create more structure or units. For instance, the example was currently we have housing, and in the housing, we have multiple families, multiple families living in units. And so in those units, the city of Victorville can start allotting for an open way, an entryway, so that it creates accessibility, and the multiple families that are living there are not violating any kind of permitting processes, which, as it stands, multiple families are living perhaps in unpermitted ways that the city has not allowed. And SB two is one to address that.
Yes, thank you, council. I can address that. I think the particular cities that you're referencing are dealing with more of issues with accessory dwelling units. And some of the cities are using these funds to create standard accessory dwelling units, to make those improvements legal for multi-generational families that are living in unpermitted structures. But as far as the main purpose of the funding is to accelerate housing, so one of the projects identified was to, which we've already started discussions with the building industry on ways to streamline the process. One of the public items tonight was the lien agreement, which helps them record their maps without having their subdivision improvement agreement saddled with a bond. So this will be a process. This is just the first step. Obviously, more items would be coming to the council as we explore these projects. The first step, obviously, would be to file the application, and what's before you tonight is just the resolution from the council, so we can file the application, obtain the funding, and start moving forward on these.
And it's my understanding that November 30th is a deadline. There's only 12 pages of two, which are just multiple choice. Would you be seeking help from, I think it's Placeworks, who has been contacting you and discussing, so if anything is kind of difficult, they would walk or even help through the process for you?
Yes, HCD, Housing and Community Development, has contracted with Placeworks to administer this grant, and we've already been in contact with them. But as you mentioned, the application process is fairly simple. It's only about 12 pages long.
And then the other thing that came up to mind was if we're going to be working and we're going to get 310,000, is that a phase one? I'm presuming it was, from my understanding, but I wasn't too clear of how many phases before we get more allotted monies to clear the housing crisis to some degree.
SB two carved out this funding for cities only in year one. All of the future year's funding would be strictly for affordable housing, which the city could take part in, but it won't be in the form of a planning grant.
Since you brought that for affordable housing, is that going to be optional for the local municipalities, or is that something that the state is bringing, and then we would in turn have to do something like SB two for affordable housing?
My understanding is an option, and yeah, the city would have to opt in to get those funds.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I might, I want to draw some specific attention to project number two, and I want to raise this to your attention, because I think this points to how we likely could execute on accelerating affordable housing. I mean, we've talked a lot about streamlining our processes and making sure our codes are written in a way that makes it easier for the developers to come in. But in project number two, we talk about what's called a community revitalization and investment authority. CREA is the acronym, and I think the best way to compare that to is what redevelopment was. And so as we had become familiar with redevelopment as a tool to actually set aside affordable housing money, affordable housing money is used, was required to be used towards the increase in the supply of affordable housing. If we're successful in actually forming that CREA, we then will have a financing mechanism, and this is intended specifically for Old Town. We would actually have a financing mechanism then that could be relied upon to help accelerate the actual building of affordable housing. And typically, where you'll see that is where the marketplace and the rules that we have, as streamlined as they are, aren't enough to move housing forward. The CREA could actually be a tool financially to help motivate that sooner as opposed to later, so that we can actually get more rooftops and beds out in our community.
Thank you.
I notice on the deadline, it's November 30th. Do you have these grants already in the process of being written up, or are they a done deal?
Yeah, it would be similar to kind of the staff report that's submitted to you. It's fairly a short application process. But what is required is the resolution by the City Council to apply for these grants.
I notice that you have three projects. They're wonderful projects in regards to affordable housing. And how do you foresee the possibility of us actually being able to receive this grant of $310,000?
It's a non-
The projects seem wonderful. I don't know any other way to say it.
Yeah, it's a non-competitive grant, so that money's already set aside for cities of our size. So I'm confident that we'll get the full 310,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. I need a motion and a second on this item.
I move the staff recommendation, City Council adopt resolution authorizing city manager or the city manager's designee to apply to California Department of Housing and Community Development Senate Bill two Planning Grant Funds, et cetera.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D three. State Water Board Administrative Civil Liability Complaint. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve a $1.5 million settlement offer from the Lahontan Regional Water Quality Control Board Administrative Civil Liability Complaint R6V-2016-0042, and approve Resolution number 19-091 to appropriate an additional $1.5 million.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by council members?
Yes. Would you mind explaining the purpose and the role that Lahontan has to its residents, including the city of Victorville? The second question is, is this recertification of 2019 to update the sewer systems management plan a procedural method or a combination of review and the sewer manhole spillage that took the city nine days to address? Third question is, how can the public receive more information on this matter and the possible threats due to legal violations that were addressed by the city and sanctioned by Lahontan?
As to validating the SSMP, I think that's the easy one to answer. That's not what this item does. In fact, we've taken previous actions to actually update the SSMP, which for the public, that's the Sewer System Management Plan. I think, starting at the top with respect to Lahontan, its role in this particular case as a division of the California State Water Quality Control Board is that Lahontan issues entities operating permits, the entities that actually have sewer systems that run through their community. In our particular case, we've got 450 plus or minus miles, lineal feet of, I'm sorry, miles, 450 miles of sewer system pipeline running through our community. And we are responsible for operating and maintaining that system under a permit with Lahontan. Unfortunately, many, several years ago, dating back to 2015 and 2016, there were actual sanitary system overflows. The nice word for that is spills, and effectively, for a number of different reasons, including vandalism, including improper disposal of things down the plumbing fixtures in residential units. We've actually had overflows where effectively the sewer pipes get clogged up and back up. Typically, there's one place for them to go, and that's basically to back up into manholes and out onto streets and perhaps eventually into stream beds and washes. We had a number of SSOs, and resulting from those SSOs, we were issued an administrative civil liability complaint about three years ago now. And we'd been working with Lahontan very closely over that course of time. The complaint actually was seeking damages at an amount substantially greater than what we're settling at today. In fact, their damages sought were in the order of about 6.3- In fact, their damages sought were in the order of about $6.3 million, which was arrived at formulaically based upon the incidents. We've actually been able to negotiate that number down, in large part because of the responsiveness your staff has had in working directly with La Honton, to ensure that we're not only taking this issue serious, but we're putting corrective measures in place to better prevent SSOs from occurring in the future. So over the course of the last couple of years, we've seen a number of large spendy items, I'll call them. Of course, we've updated our SSMP. We've also updated our rate plan to get rates, to generate enough revenue to maintain the system. But we also spend close to $4.2 million in actually just going out and cameraing and surveying the entire collection system to get a condition assessment of the entire pipeline, to understand where there's deficiency, where there's needs for attention. We've also done a number of physical improvements to improve capacity, I'm sorry, to improve flow. And then we've also done a number of sewer lining projects where we basically go in, and I think it's called in situ form, where we actually improve the integrity of the inner lining of the pipe by adding, like an epoxy-type coating, to better protect the outside environment from actually having sewage seeping through cracks or things of that nature. So with that, this item has been a long time coming. One of the elements in this settlement that we're pleased about is, in the sake of trying to enhance and improve water quality, as a part of the $1.5 million settlement, we've been allowed to retain half of that amount, $750,000, to fund a special program particularly identified in the Old Town area, where it's our goal to convert a number of units, properties, that are actually relying on septic tanks. Septic tanks have a tendency of seeping constituents into the ground that are not believed to be the best for improved water quality. So with that, we have been authorized to retain half of that amount to fund a conversion from septic to actual sewer connections. So with that, I've probably said enough, but the real technicals that are responsible for placing this item are before you, Mr. Matthews and Mr. Gangler.
Anyone else have any questions?
Well, only that it's unfortunate that when people are mischievous and want to do damage to the sewer system, and there are leaks or overflows or a combination of both, it costs all of us. So I can only say to the public, be vigilant. When you see somebody looking at a manhole or removing it, get on the phone and call somebody. We need to know those things, because end result, La Honton has been designated as the policeman in charge of the groundwater for this area by the State Water Board. They have rules that they have to follow. And whether it was an accident or on purpose, we have to pay the penalty if they determine that we violated the rules. There's nothing we can do about it, but we can certainly ask the public to assist us, so that in the future, when they see something, a leak, anything, notify the city, and so we can get on that quickly and not be faced with a huge fine from La Honton.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I think speaking to that point, one of the things that we have done as a part of our efforts has been to create greater public awareness. We've got a FOG program, for example. FOG is fats, oils, and grease. And despite vandalism, one other contributing factor to overflows is FOG. We actually have some visuals, and since we have an audience physically here, and also we have an audience over the internet, we've actually, if you're so inclined, we have some photos that can help illustrate, obviously, what we run into, in many cases, at no fault of our own, but we have to deal with. And as we go through these, I'm just going to let either Brian or Doug speak to what we're looking at. That way, you can see it. But that's, of course, if the mayor's so inclined to, wanting to-
Yeah, that's fine. We can go ahead and do that. Yes.
So what you're looking at in this first photo was the big 11 million gallon spill. That's actually the top of a manhole with the frame and cover gone. You can see a four-inch PVC pipe sticking out of the manhole. So obviously, this sewer manhole is vandalized. This is our crew out there attempting to pull things out of the manhole and get the blockage cleared. That's actually a tire that was down inside of the manhole, really adding to the problem. It's really what blocked it. And those are, there was another PVC pipe down inside the manhole, so you can see the long one was sticking out, and the other one was in there. And that's, yeah, that's on the first one. This is another spill where our guys out there are trying to pull things out. You can see the trash bags out there. They removed about 100 pounds of debris out of there, a bread toaster, a rubber ball. Trying to get the bags out, they would rip. That's just what it looks like down the manhole trying to clear it. There's some of the bags on the side of the debris. And there's a toaster. You can see it with the four-slice toaster over there. So apparently, people don't know where the dump is or the trash can is. This is another one out by the golf course, an overflow. You can see a railroad tie there that was down inside of the manhole. There was also 75 pounds of debris in that one as well. That's just another picture of the railroad tie there. Those are what we have on the three incidents that were caused by vandalism.
Thank you. That gives us a better understanding of what we're up against as far as vandalism. And the other thing that people can do, actually, is take pictures of the area, wherever there's a problem, and send it to the city. And I think that would help. Mr. City Manager, wouldn't you say?
Yes. Yeah, I would add to that. Don't assume somebody else has said something. And if you think it's clear water, it may not be clear water. So please call.
And then I'm not finished with my questions. One of my questions that was not addressed is, how can the public seek more information in this light, or whatever you just proposed? Someone wants to know more information, how do they do it? Oral public records request right now, when they stand up? Do it physically? What are they doing?
Well, I believe we have a lot of it disclosed in the staff report. I'm just flipping through it right now. It's fairly well-covered in the staff report. And certainly, if somebody doesn't have an ability to print this off, I mean, they can certainly come to City Hall, and we'd be glad to print off a copy.
And another thing is, the settlement monies came specifically from what city accounts? Were these discretionary accounts, restricted accounts?
These funds, and I believe this is seeking appropriation. Yes, it is. So we're seeking an appropriation of $1.5 million. This is be funded out of the sanitary sewer fund, so that's the enterprise fund that is funded by user fees, or I'm sorry, rates.
If I could add to that one comment on the public review. So the La Honton Water Board will be circulating all the documents that are on tonight's agenda for a 30-day public circulation. It'll be a period where they'll be getting comments. And after that, there will be response to comments. So all those documents will be available. And certainly, if anyone requests them, they could get those documents.
Okay. And then for clarity, you can clarify. In other words, the civil complaint has cost our taxpayers over $4 million to get our management systems health into approximately 440,000, 440 miles of pipeline to review its potential damages.
I wouldn't say the $4.5 million, if that's the figure you just laid out.
Yes.
It's cost us effectively the $1.5 that is the fine. We'll be able to retain half of that for capital upgrades. But everything else that you're seeing that might accumulate to $4.5, those are actual physical improvements or necessary studies done to actually improve your system, make it more functional and operable.
Right. Let me qualify why I said approximately $4.4 million, because we did consider looking at that perspective. And essentially, we're credited by La Honton from doing something of this nature. So instead of being a heavy-handed slap, it was much lessened, because the city was willing to spend that money, with necessity, of course. So the way I'm narrating it, it's costing us because of that nine-day civil complaint, nine-day manhole that wasn't able to be seen, $4.2 spent on 440,000 miles, plus then what La Honton slapped us. So it all comes out to taxpayer dollars, like Mr. Cox was saying. Unfortunately, when we're not vigilant, or something of this nature occurs, this is what we have to pay for.
Your characterization still is not accurate. It's the actual cost associated with this ACL is the $1.5 million.
Okay, so that means that we just necessitated $4.2 million, just because we knew we had the money, and we wanted to look at 440,000, 440 miles of pipeline? No, it was La Honton that went on our back and said, you need to look at that. And then we said, yes, we will, and this is the amount of money we're going to spend. So I appreciate that you don't want to characterize it that way, but that's the characterization and interpretation that I'm seeing, because had La Honton not got on our butt for that, we wouldn't have spent $4.2 on 440 pipeline revisions. So I appreciate, and I know you're going to counter that, but it's already on the record, what I believe actually occurred.
And Madam Mayor, just to correct the record, because there's definitely some inaccuracies in what was just said, one of the downsides to not having adopted a rate plan, I think for 10 years, until we did it just a couple of years ago now, one of the downsides to not adopting a rate plan that doesn't increase rates over time, it has the effect of not collecting enough revenue necessary to actually not only operate and maintain, but also to inspect and improve. So with that being said, you know, one of the downsides to not raising rates, when rates are necessary to keep up with the improvements of the system, things get foregone. And examples of things that were done responsive to this La Honton complaint are things that likely should have been done in prior years, prior to the current rate plan. So it's fair to say that a lot of this stuff should have been done 10 years prior, but there were positions, policies by the council, and positions taken by the city to keep rates as low as possible, especially during the recessionary periods.
Thank you for clarifying that. And I hope the public, and mainly Ms. Gomez, will understand how the process has been throughout this ordeal.
You're welcome to point out to any of the council member, too, Ms. Mayor.
Anyone else over here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do have a question, if I may. Correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that by virtue of the settlement, La Honton is satisfied with the steps the city has taken to rectify the situation that occurred years ago.
Yes, they're pleased with our efforts.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. I think those are all the questions. Thank you very much. I do not have any speaker cards, therefore I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Right. Well, so in my view, I think that the city having fulfilled its obligation to the people to do what was right and necessary and honorable, came with a very positive end result. And the benefit was that we had a substantially reduced penalty to the city, and that in itself is an additional benefit to our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
So I'm saddened to hear that we did not do our due diligence to upkeep with the system for over 10 years. Mr. Metzler, that really does sadden me. I'm thankful that you actually brought that into transparency, because I wasn't aware of that information. And that would justify why the $4.2 million is not part of the settlement, but part of the reason that we didn't have our due diligence to our community members, whether that meant taxpayer fee needed to go up, or whatever needed. So what I'm just trying to say with this is, we need to have our monies appropriated when we need. We don't need to wait for something of this magnitude to play its role. And it's my fervent belief that the city did not fulfill its obligation when we are waiting for 10 years to something of this nature to occur. And there is no benefit whatsoever when we are slapped with fines. I would never see any city that's slapped with a fine as a benefit. It's not a benefit. It's anything other than a benefit.
Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I defer to Councilmember Cox.
Well, I think that there may be improvements that need to be made, no matter what the improvements are, or going to be. You can always make more improvements, but no matter what improvements would have been made, you can't stop vandals from stopping up the sewer, and then blame lack of maintenance for the vandals. Put the blame where it belongs. People acting bad, who placed a stoppage in the sewer, and we had an overflow. As a result of the overflow, La Honton came in, and we're paying a fine. The other things may be indirectly related, things we need to do, but we can't blame this on lack of maintenance. It was vandals. We need to recognize that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So Councilmember Cox has really expressed my sentiments very well. It's difficult to fathom, and I don't know if it's possible to fathom, the harm that some would seek to do to others. We all saw the pictures. We all saw that that was deliberate, intentional, and took much effort to cause the destruction to our community that it did. So this was, had nothing to do with lack of maintenance, per se. These are instances where people sought to do evil, and they carried it out. Thank you.
So I'm going to continue with my comment. If you looked at the pictures, there's absolutely no evidence that there was deliberation. Yeah, Ms. Jones also spoke twice. So we blame it on a ghost called a person. Tell me in writing who was at fault, please. Because right now, we don't have someone who's at fault. We're just assuming that it was a legitimate person or groups of people that literally had malice and grabbed things and stuck it in there. That's what we're assuming. Nothing is in recordation that you can look up that says that. So be careful what you hear when you don't see it written in paper, but what's coming out of a title up here. So I don't appreciate that we're using that deliberation to hand it out to something when we don't even really know. Nine days. We don't know what happened. There's no cameras to show that. We just can assume and presume that it could have been a person or a team with malice doing this. But they're not doing it anymore, and they weren't doing it before 2015. So this is one of a kind.
Any further-
I want to respond. I'm sorry. That wasn't placed there by someone with good intent. Someone was intent on creating a problem, or it wouldn't have been there, and it didn't get there on its own.
It doesn't do any good to try and explain it. Some people just don't understand. So we'll-
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D four, Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt a Homelessness Solutions Strategic Action Plan and Authorize Application for Associated Grant Funding. The recommendation is that the city council adopt resolution number nineteen dash zero eight nine. At this time, I'm asking council members if they have any questions. Of staff three-minute time limit. Ms. Gomez, do you have any questions?
Yes, when this task force began, I wanted to sit in and kind of follow through. I don't know why I wasn't allowed to. I know Ms. Jones was a part of it. Would you, Mr. Metzler, please explain why we weren't allowed to sit in on these public meetings?
I'm not aware that you're not allowed to attend the meetings. As you just stated, they're public meetings. We actually do have members of the public that do show up. We do take public comment at those meetings. I do believe some of the deliberation when we first were directed to form, the task force was a desire to try to have it serve as a working group, absent of politics or political agendas. serve as a working group, um, absent of politics or political agendas, um, but notwithstanding that, um, it's been set up as a public meeting, so you certainly are welcome to attend.
Right, Mr. Mezler, you caught my language as past progressive continuous, which means I wanted to come in at a second meeting and I had asked through an email, and you'd sent that we weren't allowed to because it would be a Brown Act violation if we had three members, however, later on, you, I guess, consulted with, um, our council, meaning with SEL, which is the attorney, and you said, um, it was confusing and we were allowed to go thereafter, but that really put it, uh, a bump in the road for me to try to follow through what I wanted to follow through with the task, and you have not addressed it, but, um, I appreciate that memo that went out, I got it a little bit too late, so I wasn't able to attend the meetings thereafter, but I was just apprehensive into understanding why at first you felt that it was gonna be a political guise, but you don't have to respond to that, the memos really do, do say it, and so we have that in your, in your language and in your writing.
Anyone else?
Mayor, can I, uh, if I may, can I clarify the nature of the meeting?
Please do.
Thank you. Um, when the tasks, the, the staff received direction from the City Council back in February at its, um, homelessness issues, um, workshop that we had to form the task force, spent the next couple of months, um, conducting a thorough application and, and, uh, process, and selected the members and had our first meeting in May. Both Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Gomez attended that first meeting, um, so there was no, um, issue or, or question of any violation of the Brown Act because only two members attended. Um, at that point, staff was of the impression that it was going to be a private business meeting, but we still, um, welcomed both, uh, members to the meeting. Um, it wasn't until our third meeting that we did find out from legal counsel, based on a specific government code, that because the council had directed the formation of the task force, that it was actually a public meeting, um, and we actually publicized that, started posting agendas, um, so the meetings have been well-known to be public since the third meeting that we've had, um, so I'm, I'm, just wanna make sure that the, the public knows that that was the actual process that we went through, that has been thoroughly explained to the task force, um, and those members that are here, um, have been through that.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? Any questions?
I would like to say something. We, as members of the City Council, seek to give quality of life to everyone who resides in Victorville, and this is a means by which also to bring life to those who may, and for some reason, it's lacking in their, in, in their presence, and so, let me say that with a plan of helping the homeless, we are in need of making certain that we seek all means of funding, and this is a means of, one way to fulfill the lack that they may have, they had need education, medical, and housing, and so, I would hope that our, in our discussion of this resolution, that we all know that we do care about every resident, regardless of who they may be or the life that they may live, we are here to provide quality of life, and this is one means by which the City Council sees that by having a plan and seeking grant money, and by other means, by also seeking grants from the state as well as from the federal, that we will meet the needs of a good life for everyone, and I hope that you would understand that our discussion is for the positiveness of everyone.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Madam Mayor, um, Mr. Mezler, um, are we to understand that you're satisfied with this strategic action plan that's being put forward this evening?
Uh, I, I am satisfied with this, uh, it, it certainly represents a lot of hard work, uh, from a lot of those that are stakeholders and have, uh, great concern and interest in, in the subject matter, and, um, it outlines a framework that I think if we follow, gives us the safest way to at least attempt to, uh, provide some type of, uh, response to the homelessness issue. It is, it is a program that does focus on, uh, housing first, um, so certainly you can see in the first of the, uh, number of goals that haven't been yet achieved, it's focusing on improving, uh, our shelter operations, um, improving shelter operations beyond what exists currently, so that's focusing on beds, that's focusing on rooftops, finding a place for our homeless population to at least be, uh, so that we can also have a better opportunity to connect them, uh, to, um, to services, uh, to help try to eventually get them on their feet and, and back to a sustainable lifestyle. Um, it also focuses on, um, uh, rapid rehousing, uh, creating opportunities where we can transition folks into, um, residential units, uh, on a much quicker basis, uh, it also allows us to enhance the prevention side of, uh, our, uh, activity, but I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that despite all that, it also does have a focus on improving our enforcement side of things, and, and one of the things that we do acknowledge is that we have a responsibility to, to providing help, uh, to those, uh, that are desirous of help, um, but we also have, um, we have a hard time tolerating it for those, uh, that aren't, or, uh, gonna help themselves when, when we're actually helping them, so we do actually focus on, uh, the, um, the creation of codes, the enhancing of our codes, uh, so that we have better policies in place to make our public spaces particularly safe and free from homelessness as much as possible.
Thank you, and, uh, Madam Mayor, that concludes my questions, but I, I do have comments, but I'll reserve them for such the time that they're invited by the chair, thank you.
Thank you. I do have one card, uh, Bill Edwards. So I do not have any speaker cards for this item here, so I need a motion in a second.
Uh, yes, uh, Madam Mayor, I, uh, move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez, any further comments?
Yes, I would be remiss, I'm sorry.
No, please go ahead.
I would be remiss if I failed to make the following noticed to the public and for the record. Um, as a matter of fact, we had an organization from LA come up here, Searchlight, it's a homeless solutions entity, nonprofit, that was negated entry, um, and staff mentioned to Searchlight that they could only come in to this roundtable discussion by invitation. Uh, I don't know if they got the actual memo, 'cause I know I didn't forward them the memo, 'cause I felt it was only for council members and everybody would have been held entry, um, but-
Madam Mayor, I wish to call for the orders of the day, as it doesn't appear that this discussion is germane to the motion-
Yeah, it's the homelessness, and that's what we're talking about.
The motion is for the approval of the-
And, so it's interesting how they wanna shut it up, right? So Searchlight didn't have entry, so if that happened to any other organization, I have to apologize for each one of you, you should know that that's what happened, so my apologies for each one of you of your organization-
Madam Mayor, may I state my point?
...and was not at the roundtable, sorry.
As I do have the floor, um, it, it is the council's policy that when we have an ag- and, and the Brown Act requires it actually, when we have an agenda item, that we can only speak to the agenda item, once it becomes restricted to a motion, we can only speak to the pending motion, and so the breach that occurred here was that the discussion, though the information may very well be important, it was not germane to the motion pending. That, thank you, Madam Mayor, is my point well taken?
Thank you very much.
Yes, and for the record, homeless solutions, Searchlight is very pertinent to the homeless solution task, task force, and they were ousted, so that's part of the record too, thank you very much.
Next time, I will ask you to be, remove yourself.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, I, I have comments.
I'm sorry, we were doing comments already.
No, we did not, comments were not invited, this is the point when we do comments.
You were speaking on the turn, that's why you-
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I was speaking during comments, thank you for interrupting.
So, in, in keeping with, um, accepted, um, practice in terms of the way a meeting is run, Madam Mayor, may I please share my comments at this point, thank you. Well, listen, first of all, thanks to our staff and, um, the Homelessness Solutions Task Force, um, for the very hard work that it engaged in to bring forward this strategic action plan, I'm sure it was, uh, no easy task bringing together many minds with many different views about how to, uh, address this very complex issue. I support this plan in that it considers widely dissimilar groups in our community, yet seeks to bring us together as a united whole to serve the best interests of all. On the one side, this plan lends itself to coming alongside those in dire need who are in circumstances beyond their control, to identify those who truly wish to meet, move beyond the handout to the handup, and to encourage wholesome, productive living. On the other side, it addresses the legitimate concerns and needs of the rest of our community, and enhances, as we heard earlier, our ability to enforce existing laws. I'm proud to say that it's my understanding that Victorville is, uh, generally recognized as being on the forefront of addressing the complexities of homeland, homelessness in our city, and I'm, um, delighted in the work that we've accomplished thus far, and look forward to seeing the fruits of this wise and balanced approach to managing what many might otherwise think a lost cause. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for all that clarification.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez, all those in favor?
Aye.
So why did you allow her to do comments and not everybody else if it was the comment section? Was she the only one allowed to do comments?
You, you had already given your comments previously, they were out of order, but I believe they're still part of the record right now.
No, they're not, because they were interrupted.
They're certainly part-
Is that policy?
They're certainly part of the record.
I know, but, so part of the record says only Ms. Jones was, was able to be uninterrupted, but when I was out of order, I don't have the opportunity to have the comment section, right?
That's all on the record.
Right, that's what you're saying?
That's all on the record.
Okay, so I didn't have the opportunity, right, to do the comments?
She's interrupting our meeting, I cannot continue.
You are interrupting the meeting at this point.
No, I'm not, I'm a council member, and I have a voice.
Andre.
You do not have the floor at this point, so I'd recommend if, if you continue to discuss, perhaps we should take a recess.
Perfect, no need to arrest me, Captain Bessenger, no need, don't worry about that one.
We could move on to take the vote at this point.
Smile, smile.
Andre, do we have to tolerate this stupidity here?
Yeah, your language is uncalled for.
Here's stupidity.
She is out of order in terms of conduct of the meeting at this point, and so I would recommend, I would recommend either a recess at this point, or moving, or moving on.
Five-minute recess. Please take your seats, we will be starting up again. Please take your seats.
I thought, my God, 8 o'clock, we'll get off. But we're almost pretty close to finishing. Here's a good sign.
We will continue with our meeting, and I believe we were, um, in discussions.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, by Councilmember Gomez.
Yes, so as a matter of fa- of fact, Searchlight is a homeless solution organization that was negated entry, they were told that they were not invited, and indeed, they were discouraged from further attending the roundtables, which questions, why are other organizations not being allowed to come in? And once we rectified what we told was not a Brown Act violation, or was not only an invite, it, I had to apologize, because I know other organizations don't have my personal cell, and they didn't know to reach out to me, and so this is to be placed on the record, I'm not blaming staff or the executive team, I'm just saying sometimes when we do things a certain way, it ends up affecting a lot of people that we can actually help out. Victorville and the county of San Bernardino is the second highest, Victorville is the second highest population in homelessness, that's nothing to be proud of.
Mayor Garcia, may I offer a comment?
Please.
Um, well, Searchlight is not a member of the task force, um, just, there's, there's a limited number of positions that, that make up the task force, um, one of the other directives from council was to hire a full-time position, the Homelessness Solutions Coordinator, Ms. Cassandra Circe, um, is, her, her position is dedicated to not just working with the task force, but any organization that provides, uh, services to the homeless, and in that role, she is currently working on a couple of projects with Searchlight, so I would, um, request that Councilmember Gomez, uh, give me the name of the person that, that they think was slighted, because I would love to outreach and make sure that they're not.
His name is Daniel, thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Count, motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item D5, Lease Agreement with High Desert Homeless Services, Inc., to Operate a Temporary Warming Shelter at the Victor Valley Transportation Center. Uh, the recommendation is that the City Council adopt Resolution Nine, Number 19 dash 092. At this time, I will ask council members if they have any questions, have staff, uh, three-minute time limit, I'll start with Ms. Gomez.
Yeah, and so, this narration is gonna amount to an actual question, it's not a rhetorical one, so staff can also address it, 'cause I would never like any council member, let alone anyone from the public, enter a warming shelter and get ousted, like I did. If nobody realized, there was a couple of years ago, maybe two now, there was a homeless shelter, I mean, a warming shelter that was placed, and a lot of the granting came from San Bernardino County. Uh, my purpose was with another homeless individual to come inside and just one-on-one understand what their personal stories were, their personal stories were very chagrin, I don't know why I made the news that I was ousted of a warming shelter when all my duty was to represent a homeless population, given my cellphone number and my name, and I know at that time, the city didn't have any monies or anything, and I don't know if that's what made it where a council member such as myself could not enter. Uh, I know now that the city is granting monies, or, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, some kind of permitting process, because we have individuals here who are advocating, and I'm hoping that staff is listening very attentively, because as I, I visit the warming shelter, I, I would like to have, um, Keith Mezler understand that this such event that was replicated on multiple occasions is not replicated, and if there's something, like, as a council member that I'm not allowed to go, you would please make that as part of the record, so I do not go to the warming shelter and talk to the homeless.
Madam Mayor and Council, I, I will address the, the comments that were just made, um, but dating back to 2012, the High Desert Homeless Shelter, um, as well as, uh, with support from the Victor Valley Rescue Mission, has operated a warming shelter in the city, um, to try to prevent, um, freezing, uh, of individuals when the temperatures drop below 40 degrees. Um, the warming shelter has been held at the fairgrounds, and that was not an option for this year, and it was a very, um, we're getting upon the weather, um, as most of you know, where it's already actually reached those nighttime temperatures, and without any real solutions, any options for a shelter, um, the applicant, the Victor, um, the homeless, the High Desert Homeless Services, um, director came to the city to try to seek solutions, um, in the last three weeks, so it became an urgent situation, um, based on their performance, um, with us as a CDBG recipient, and based on the council's direction to award, uh, funding for the warming shelter for this, uh, current year and, and, uh, last year, um, as staff, we tried to come up with a, a temporary solution, something that will get the warming shelter operating this year. What did not- What did not weigh into our decision to continue to participate was the incident that took place a couple of years ago with Councilmember Gomez, because we thoroughly understand that situation, and we thoroughly looked into it as city staff when the incident occurred. And so if the request was to be on record in stating what the council and staff's role will be in the shelter, if this lease for the facility is approved, that will not open the doors for us, or the council, or any members of the public, just to walk in and start interviewing and photographing the guests that are there for the warming shelter. It's actually run as a professional operation, and so there is an intake process that Jimmy Waldron or Bill Edwards can tell you a little bit more about. But the public funding doesn't mean that all the rights of those individuals goes away, and they can just be, anyone can just walk in and see them in whichever predicament that they're in. Some of them don't want to be photographed, they don't want to be questioned, they don't want to be there. They're just trying to stay warm. So, yes, on record, it just doesn't open the door for anyone just to walk in, and that's the same, that is true for this year as well, if you do approve it. With that, I will say that we have met on-site with who will be the operators of the warming shelter, with the fire marshal, with the building official, with the city planner, with all staff involved in trying to find solutions for the different homeless issues that we're facing, including the starting of buildings on fire when homeless are trying to keep themselves warm. It's for all of those reasons that we're trying to be part of the solution and are bringing this warming shelter proposed temporary location to you for this year, as we work towards a longer-term solution. And the strategic action plan that you just approved actually has, as number three on the strategic action plan, a goal of enhancing shelter operations. And what would be included in that is vetting and discussing long-term solutions so that we don't have to have a warming shelter seasonally, but that rather we have a 24/7 shelter here every single day, so that there's not a need to just man up or staff up in the cold weather. So we definitely have a long-term solution in mind and are just requesting approval of this use for this year, as we are really out of options to house those overnight in the freezing temperatures for this year, for the season. We remain available for any specific questions, and as it relates to specific questions about the operation and concerns about how it operates, we definitely have both Mr. Edwards and Mr. Waldron in the audience to answer those questions.
Want I also have any other questions? I do, Madam Mayor, may I? Thank you. And I'm sure I'm going to use all of my time in asking my questions. So, first of all, I noticed that we have several esteemed members in our audience that are known for their love and care and sacrificial giving to our community. That's Mr. Edwards and Mr. Waldron, that will be responsible if it's approved for operating the warming shelter. So I hope and trust that as a council member, they understand, and all of our audience members understand, that as a council member, I'm called to give a full ear to varying opinions and concerns, and it's with this in mind, that I hope all of my questions are received in the spirit in which they're intended. So I listened carefully to the Planning Commission meeting, read the staff reports, the resolution, the lease agreement, and these are my questions and concerns. So on the lease agreement, page 1.6, under the monthly rent, if one looks at that ostensibly, it looks like it's not rent at all. It speaks instead to a reimbursement of the city for utility use. Is my understanding correct that in Section 2 of the resolution, there are findings that declare that this would be for the common benefit of the city, and therefore it addresses that concern of the gifting of public funds?
Yes.
Thank you. It was, in listening to the Planning Commission meeting, it was suggested that security from Greyhound would be onsite as perhaps a means to deal with a potential increase in loitering, et cetera. I hope that we're not suggesting that extra challenge that we may create should become an additional burden for another company.
So the requirement from the extra level of security requested by the Planning Commission in connection with issuing the CUP or approving the CUP was that rather than one private security guard that was being proposed by the applicant was utilized, they actually upped that to a requirement for two security guards. They are not Greyhound security. They are private security that an arrangement has been made with the High Desert Homeless Shelter for. During the hours that the shelter is not operating, VVT-A actually has a security guard, but that's not during the warming shelter hours.
Will those security guards be operating 24/7?
The requirement on the conditions of approval for the CUP required the security one hour before the shelter, the warming shelter opens, and one hour after it closes.
All right. I'm concerned about the type of rollout and administering of the warming shelter, given the negatives that we're planning to see at the last warming shelter at the fairgrounds. So my questions related to that are, did anyone consider a contract that includes a one-month probationary period to determine the program's success, and that it is not proving itself to be an undue burden to neighboring residents, businesses, and patrons of Greyhound?
That was a concern of the Planning Commission as well. A CUP does have an actual revocation process in code, and so the fact that the use of the building was approved via CUP means that the Planning Commission and/or zoning administrator, depending on the circumstances, could actually revoke the CUP.
Does the less see understand the degree to which the city is going to provide oversight on this?
Both the applicant and the supporting team from Victor Valley were present and heard all of the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting.
And was a month-to-month contract ever considered, rather than biting the bullet for a full five months?
It was not, because as staff, we know we actually have teeth via the CUP process.
And then, I know that the intake process really involves people being able to come in, I believe it's from six to 10, to be approved, and there's background checks. Does the Megan's Law database provide all of the information that we see in the resolution so they can't be wanted by the police or have been convicted of a violent crime? Is that information readily acceptable through that database?
Councilmember Jones, if possible, can we ask the applicant a little bit more of the vetting process that they do as it relates to Megan's Law?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I will be calling them up when I have, I do have speaker cards for them. Yeah, wait until I call you.
Then we'll get you when it's time. So I think maybe some of these other questions...
You're out of time?
I think I'll defer my questions until the applicant come forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're not allowed because your time was up. That's a point of order, for clarification.
And you are out of order?
Madam Mayor, I do have some comments, but I would like to hear from the individuals. I noticed you have several cards.
Yes, I do.
I think maybe those comments and concerns might be answered by them.
Yes.
Question. How many, Sophie, how many homeless do we have in regards to population? Approximately?
In the 2019 point-in-time count, we had, what the count was that day, was 333 homeless individuals. Some were sheltered, but the real number to focus on is the unsheltered, and I believe it was 170, it was just in the previous staff report. Let me find it. I want to say it's around 180 unsheltered.
If I'm allowed to bring them up to speak, I think we can ask them all those questions, and they can answer them.
179, 179, Dr. Rita.
The reason I question that is because I know that in terms of the maximum number for individuals to go to this facility is 80, 80. And so my next question would be, if there were more who were requiring a warm place to sleep, are we going to look at another option, or is this the only option that we're going to be considering?
This is the only warming shelter option and service provider that we're aware of that operates here.
And there's no possibility of any other one, like another nonprofit, who would want to help out on the remaining those that might want a warm place?
When the applicant speaks, they might have a backup plan for overflow. I know last year, they utilized one of the churches, but I'm not sure if that's an option this year.
Thank you very much.
I would like to do this. I would like to have Bill Edwards and Jimmy Waldron both come up at the same time. You each have three minutes, so you will have six minutes together, and this way everyone can ask questions. I think that would work better.
So as a point of clarification, Mary Golar Garcia, I know Mrs. Jones' timing was up. So are you allotting for more hours? No, I'm not. I'm asking for clarification.
You're interrupting?
No, I'm not. I'm asking for clarification.
Andre?
That actually is an interruption right now.
No, Andre.
The presiding officer has given the floor to members of the public right now.
I asked for clarification.
And that's the clarification.
What's the clarification?
That she's given the floor to the members of the public right now.
Okay, so Ms. Jones, you don't have time to speak. Sorry, I was trying to open up more for you.
You don't open anything, okay?
Yes, I do, because if she gets more time, my time doubles.
Okay. I'm sorry. This is the way we conduct our meetings.
Absolutely. Thank you for letting me know.
We have craziness. Okay.
You had questions regarding, you already got your answers, okay?
I don't, but I'm hoping that in their presentation, the remainder of my questions will be answered. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So you can give us your presentation, and then if there's questions, we can ask.
So my name is Jimmy Waldron. I'm actually the Executive Director for High Desert Homeless Services, and I get to be lucky enough to be the lead agency doing the warming shelter. And every year, we provide a warm, safe place for individuals, and they don't actually have to be homeless, that need a warm, safe place to stay. Some people have come, not a lot, but don't have heating in their houses, and they need to stay warm. But we provide a warm, safe place for anybody, under any circumstances, to come and stay. We only provide them with packaged food, so that we don't have to cook or anything, but all it's meant to be is just a warm, safe place for them to sleep, and then they leave in the morning. So over the years, we've helped hundreds and hundreds of people not only just stay warm, but while they're there, we help them to transition into other programs. We've transitioned families into the High Desert Homeless Services for long-term shelter. It's where we can get them into permanent housing, and we've transitioned several of them into different recovery programs to help get them help with other issues that they may have, so that they can return to our city as productive members of society. That's the end goal. And we may only have 80 beds, but when they come in, what we try to do is we try to transition those that we can into other programs to open up those beds. So we partner with several of the other agencies, churches who come and volunteer. The hours of operation are from, we changed it this year, to 6:30 to 7:00 a.m., because we don't want to interfere with the Greyhound bus station that's operating from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So that gives us a half an hour overlap to where they'll already be out of their business. And we also were requested to have two additional security guards for the time that we're in there, an hour before we start, which would be 5, until 8:00 in the morning, because everybody has to be off the property at 7:00. And then during the operation hours, the Greyhound is there, there's a security guard that's already previously there, that starts before the 10:00 a.m. that they open the Greyhound, and they stay until 10:00. So in the hours between 6:00 and 10:00, there'll actually be three security guards there, or between 5:00 and 10:00, there'll actually be three security guards on there. And this year, we've actually done a different intake packet. We have some shelter rules. I don't know if you guys were privy to get those today. Sorry it took so long to get them to you. But we wrote out a set of rules for the clients to follow, so that way we can hold them accountable for staying there. We have shelter policies that are in place, so that we have them to sign it. We wanted to make sure that not only do we provide them a warm, safe place for them to stay, but we're not interfering with any of the businesses in the local area. We know that there's a lot of concern with some of the local businesses, so as part of the terms and conditions for them being allowed to stay in our warming shelter, they cannot loiter at any of the businesses, they cannot panhandle near or around anywhere in Victorville, and they cannot come to the facility before 6:15 in order to check in. That way, they don't disrupt any of the business at the Greyhound. And they all know that they have to leave the property at 7:00 a.m., and if they're caught on the property or violating any of those things, then they will no longer be allowed to stay at the warming shelter.
Yeah, I'd just like to, in regards to the additional security, there is a cost with that. Although some of it is being donated by Councilman Greg over in Asperia, the company still is a for-profit company, and so there will be extra costs to High Desert Homeless Services this year in order to have two security guards from an hour before to an hour after. So, you know, thank you for your consideration in allowing us to use the building, and if we could, any costs that are attributed to us operating there, if we can keep them as low as possible, it will help us out as agencies to provide the best care to our people. And I just wanted to find out, I don't know if it was part of the stipulations in the CUP that no violent offenders, because in a background check, to answer your question, Megan's Law does not give you that information. It simply tells you if they're a registered sex offender. And so that is another database that, as far as I know, those are not free any longer. They used to be. You used to be able to look up anyone in San Bernardino County, but that's not available to, to my knowledge, that that's not available information without a pay-for service, unless they reveal it. So, okay, to answer that question.
So, Madam Mayor, I do have additional questions, however...
Then we would have to vote on that. So I'll make the motion that she gets more time.
Madam Mayor, I have the floor. I've been recognized by the chair, so...
How can you just get time when you're violating the policy? That's what I don't understand.
Madam Mayor, do I have a question?
I don't have a problem making the motion that she does get more time.
Councilmember Gomez, Ms. Jones has the floor right now.
Based on the policy, she's violating it. She has only three minutes.
It's up to the presiding officer to allow her the time.
She only has three minutes.
This member has been recognized by the chair.
Okay, are you giving her more time? Make it clear that you are.
Andre, I'm going to have Ms. Gomez remove herself.
You can't, because I'm not removing myself, and you don't have the power or anybody in here.
The simple...
I dare you.
Another five-minute recess. We can deal with this. Five-minute recess.
Ms. Jones is going to get more time. Come on. I'll make the motion to give you more time, but you don't just...
Our time is up. We will be starting up again. Please take your seats. We will be starting back up again. We are back in session again. Everyone to their seats, including Ms. Gomez. Go ahead.
Okay. So I just wanted to kind of address one of your questions that you had. So one of the stipulations, and we discussed at the CPU, the Planning Commission meeting, was about keeping a list of all the guests who came in and taking that to the police department to have them verify also, as an alternative plan. But we were also going to run everybody's name in Megan's, what is it called?
Megan's Law.
Megan's Law, yeah.
Good. Okay, thank you. So, Madam Mayor, may I have the floor for just a moment? So although I do have additional questions, it's customary and courteous for me to not ask them at this time, as I recognize that the rest of my council members haven't yet had their full opportunity to ask questions. And during that process, my questions, my... And during that process, my questions might be answered. So, Madam Mayor, I yield.
Thank you.
Oh, fine.
All my questions have been answered. Thank you.
I'm gonna give my, the remainder of my time. You're not letting me speak. I'm talking.
You can speak.
Gloria Garcia, I am speaking. Anything else you want to say, Gloria? I'm gonna give the remainder of my time to Mrs. Jones, so she can occupy it.
I, I, I don't actually know if, it's kind, what the member is seeking to do. I just don't know if it's permitted. I know that we don't allow audience members to do that, so I don't know if I would seek legal counsel.
Well, then what I would do, then I would make a motion to provide Mrs. Jones more time for her to be able to question what she needs to question. That's my motion.
I'll second that with the understanding that it doesn't exceed three minutes.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones, to add three minutes to my time. Your time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Councilmember Gomez, and the rest of my colleagues. All right, so, going back to that specific point, in the, on page five, point J of the resolution, it clearly says that a guest of the shelter cannot be wanted by police or have been convicted of a violent crime. If they're being admitted prior to that search being conducted by the police, I don't, I don't know how we get there. I don't know how we meet that criteria.
I'm not understanding either. So the only, the only thing that we can do in our power is provide that list on the second day after they've stayed there the first night? And we do ask that question as part of the intake process, whether or not they have those things. And if they've lied on the intake process, then they're not allowed to come back.
I know, but they're, I mean, one can say that there's motivation to say what one needs to say to be warm.
We had the same issue at our homeless shelter as well.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna tell you straight up, that's very, very concerning to me, because I'm not willing for any member of our community to be imperiled one bit by not having factual data in advance of having the privileges of the services that you're providing. In the, on that same page of the resolution, that the terminology aggressive panhandling is used. And yet, when you spoke tonight, you talked about any panhandling. So are we going to, are we looking to modify the resolution so that it says panhandling period?
Are you asking me or him?
Mr. Mattsler.
I can answer that if you'd like.
Both.
Okay, okay, so the terms of the conditional use permit said aggressive panhandling?
Yes.
So however, even though that's the bare minimum that we are required, we are going a little bit further and stating no panhandling for any of our guests if they would like to stay there? So we're just adding an additional-
Right, because we understand that the term aggressive is rather subjective and likely not enforceable, right?
Yes, and we want to make sure that we are not an inconvenience to any of the businesses or any of the public.
I know that, and I do that, and I, and my questions might come across as a bit hard, but I have to make sure that I'm representing everybody. I know-
No, I get it.
You two are fine gentlemen with big hearts for our community, and I do appreciate it.
So I would like to offer a solution to your question. So we could actually, if we gain access for the website, do a background check on, the same background check that we do at our shelter. So there is a solution. We could do that previous to them staying there.
And that would, that would tell us if they're wanted or have been convicted-
In the, in the county of San Bernardino, yes.
Okay.
That's based on actual information that they give us, so.
And we're willing to modify the CUP to state just that? Yep, condition it that way? With the resolution?
You could condition approval on the lease.
We can add the additional information to our intake policies if you'd like.
But the-
I think that would be easier than you guys doing it.
I would like it on the intake policies, but I think it needs to be integral to the-
We can add it to the lease.
Oh, there's like, there you go.
Agreement.
And Councilmember Jones, to just add a little bit more information to the question about panhandling, we have been advised by both our law enforcement that work with the homeless, as well as legal, city attorney, legal counsel, that the threshold for when a person would be, I guess, arrested for panhandling or cited for panhandling is when it reaches the level of aggressive. Other panhandling in the form of just merely holding signs, but not going and approaching a person, has been deemed, I guess, by some courts, and Andre, you can correct me if I'm wrong, as free speech. And so, that's why the city will typically use the aggressive panhandling threshold. What Mr. Waldron is proposing is that as a condition to stay in the shelter that he's operating, that he require above and beyond, and have them voluntarily agree to do no level of panhandling.
So that would be the means by which we can meet our need and still meet the letter of the law?
Because he will not let them stay at the shelter. And it's him, the operator, as opposed to the city doing enforcement.
Because, just as a side note, as a woman, many women, many people are taught that someone, when someone approaches you, that you need to necessarily be a little bit wary, because it could be an attempt at a crime, so. And I've been approached by the politest of people, but I still don't like it, and I'm uncomfortable with it. And I wouldn't want any of my neighbors to feel an increase in the panhandling in our community.
You have thirty seconds?
Thank you. Has there, has there been any thought given to changing the intake process so that there's a registration day where everybody comes and you can apply, and that your, your stay at the shelter isn't day by day, but rather for a period of a week? That way, we could mitigate people hanging around in the community for a better whack at a first-come, first-served stay?
There has not been any thought into any alternatives into the intake process. So some people come on some days, and then some days they won't come. So, I'm not, if they-
So the clientele, then am I to understand, might not be interested in, like, a consistent week's stay?
I have not asked any of them that question.
And then, and then one last question, if I may. What about just merely, first of all, they're gonna have to all prove who they are, correct, to do the background check? Right? Okay. And then second, has any thought been given to really providing or giving priority to the most vulnerable of the vulnerable? And that's the elderly and families with children?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we actually set aside a room for families with children to assure that they have beds available for them.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, I think that does it, and I have comments for later. Thank you. And thank you to my colleagues for indulging me.
I have a question. I was reading the lease, and I noticed that in terms of basic costs, it's one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars besides your food and other things that you may have to provide. So my question is, is there any possibility that your lease could be broken because of lack of funds? Or are you fully funded for the entire period of the lease?
We do have some funding already available, and we will continue fundraising for the remainder. And any costs that goes beyond our funding, then our organization will incur and then try to recuperate.
And is there a possibility that you wouldn't publicize the possibility of donations? You know, money's money?
Yeah, money's money.
The answer is yes.
I'm just saying that, you know, I would, I would hopefully feel that the lease would not be terminated because of the lack of funds. Would you be willing, or would you be able to have donations be provided to you so that our homeless would always have a warm place for the period of time listed?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, I do not. Thank you.
Did you have something to say, or is his time up, or does he still have time?
Again, just thank you to you guys. I shared this earlier with a couple of friends, is that the task force and the perception of us as service providers from the outside looking into the city, we see things progressing, right? I've lived here my entire life. My grandfather moved here in nineteen forty-three. And I grew up in the downtown area. And I just want to thank you guys for moving things forward. There's a task force. There's things like this being talked about that haven't, it's a precedent, right? We're seeing things change in the light of what's actually going on in the area of Victorville. So I just want to thank you guys, on behalf of the homeless that we get to serve every day. Jimmy and I's jobs is to hug homeless people, right? That's what we get to do. So we just thank you for being a part of the solution of this, and so, thank you.
Well, I want to thank you personally-
Thank you very much.
-for everything that you do. We appreciate it greatly. And may God give you the resources that you need to continue. And hopefully, we will find a long-term solution here very soon, and I'm pretty sure that we will. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I do have other speaker cards. And next will be Mike Grabhorn. And after Mike will be Jennifer Neri.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council, and all the rest of you that gave up your time tonight to be here. I appreciate it. A couple of things. I'm the vice president of the board, also at the homeless shelter, amongst some other things. It was mentioned about the panhandling and background checks and such as that. And I think we need to remember that these people are already in our community. They're already up and down Seventh Street, over here by Ninety-Nine Cent Store, out in the desert. We don't foresee importing people. So they're already existing members of our city. So I wanted to mention that, so that makes it kind of moot about the panhandling, how we're gonna stop them, this and that. We're gonna do our very best. I, myself, and some others have talked about, we will drive around in the morning to be sure people are cleared out of the area. The other thing is, this also is a cost-saving to the city. Every winter, we have fires in the vacant buildings from the homeless breaking in and causing fires. When the fire gets out of hand, they take off. And we have fire department, police department, sometimes even paramedics down there. The incur of cost, I would imagine, is pretty high. If we can get those people to take advantage of the homeless, or the warming shelter, we will eliminate most of that. So it's a cost savings also, besides the savings of lives. And that all being said, I wanted to thank the city council and all of you that dress professionally and appropriately. And my heart goes out to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jennifer Neri, and after Jennifer will be Monica Fiesel.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you. I'm Jennifer Neri, and I'm a resident of Old Town. I'm also a member of Rude, but I'm here on behalf of the warming shelter. And I just wanted to express that I support it, because we know that there's a lot of individuals that live there out there in the river bottom, which include families and children. And without this warming shelter, they're most likely gonna be squatting in the buildings that are on Seventh Street. And we don't want to lose any more historical buildings. We know that these are individuals that if the warming shelter isn't open, they have nowhere else to go. So we want to prevent, you know, the loss of lives and the loss of the buildings. And we appreciate you guys considering and even offering the transportation center, because we know that's a big space, and it's not being utilized at this moment. So I think it's essential for the lives of the homeless, which they are people also. They are unfortunate. They don't have a place to retreat from the, you know, freezing elements like we do. So, I mean, the other night, it was so cold, and I felt so bad for them, because I knew that, I mean, I'm lucky. I could just run in my house and stay warm, which they don't have that option. So I think that without the warming shelter, we will lose lots of lives and probably more buildings. So I just wanted to express that I hope you guys approve it, especially on behalf of the many homeless people that we have in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. After Monica Fiesel, will be Maggie Martin.
My name is Monica Fiesel. I've been part of the warming shelter for the last three years. And I just want to thank you for allowing us a space to have our homeless. I know that eighty people in one place doesn't seem like a lot when we have such higher numbers. But very rarely did we turn anybody away last year. We accommodated many people in the grounds that we had, so anything that's bigger is appreciated. But I want to thank you most of all for recognizing human beings and being willing to move forward. Is it perfect at this time? It isn't. Can we address so many different issues, safety? We never have, sorry, asked people to provide IDs. We just want everyone to have a safe, warm place. So we've never known who's staying with us. But I believe that God gave us this, this place for everyone to come and join together. We've never had any issues with anyone that's come in. We've had a couple that we've had to ask to leave based on not wanting to follow the rules. But, you know, I was there with other people every single night, Christmas, Thanksgiving, never issues. We've never had to do the Megan's Law. We're willing to, absolutely. If you guys want to show us how to get that done through the task force, absolutely, we're willing to adjust. I just want to thank you mostly for remembering that these are individuals of our community. Whether we want them here or not, they're here. And we can help them improve their quality of life through the warming shelter. This is just the stepping stone for what Ms. Yersey and you guys have decided to do as we move forward. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Maggie Martin?
Good evening, Your Honor, council. You know what? I just want to thank all of you from the bottom of my heart for having this warming shelter. I'm usually at all the meetings, right? And I remember this, it's a process. Everything through government is a process. So it's kind of been a little winding road, a little time to get this going. But, but, you know, I like what, not the lady, this one, but the one before her said, is, you know, we're all human beings. And if I can't think of anything better to say at this point, I would say to feel gratitude, no matter how humble your home might be, that we get to go home every night to food in our refrigerator, clothes on our backs, heat, cooling, and a safe place. And I appreciate what you all have done so much. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last card that I had on this item. Therefore, I need a motion and a second on this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda with the understanding that the agreement, with a further understanding that the agreement will be modified to ensure that background checks are completed in, as part of the intake process before anyone actually participates in services, so that we can ensure that they are not wanted, to ensure that we're fulfilling the requirements of point J of the resolution, which means that no individual can be wanted by the police or have been convicted of a violent crime.
You know, and I would like to make a counter-motion to keep the recommendation as is with no other alterations to it.
Or either one of those. Can we just, for the record, make sure it's clear that we are voting on the version of the lease that is in the addendum?
Second, that motion, was this a-
That was a substitute motion. Right now, the motion on the floor is a substitute motion. Would need a second. The substitute motion is to go back to the lease as it is without the requirement for the background checks. So, let's see if there's a second.
Is there a second?
Is there a second? There be no second?
Go back to the original motion. Is there a second on the original motion?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes. All right. So I am so grateful for all of the input, and those that have come up to speak are truly pillars in our community with big hearts who sacrifice daily. I'm so grateful.
Just for clarification, what did we vote on?
The motion on the floor right now is to adopt the resolution approving the lease, which is the lease in the addendum, with a requirement of background checks prior to intake.
So that's the vote now?
Correct.
May I continue, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. So a huge undertaking, and we must all appreciate those who are willing to give of themselves to take on this monumental task. I do not want to see some of the things that happened at the fairgrounds happen here in Old Town. And I do agree that many of these people may already take up shelter of one sort or another in the community. That wasn't the case at the fairgrounds. There was an influx of people that were congregating in the areas, and they knew where they could not be, and so they stepped one inch beyond to congregate, to have a better chance at being first served for shelter that evening. So I understand that the lessee can't be reasonably, can't reasonably be responsible for the conduct of its patrons once off-site, but I would certainly expect that we step up code enforcement and the enforcement of our panhandling, trespassing, and loitering ordinances, so that we can remain abreast of successes and/or unintended consequences of shelter operations. I hope that we're looking at means in which we can monitor progress, whether it's a dedicated line or something on our website, so that people can call or write in with praise reports or concerns. Again, I'm so very thankful. I hope this is successful for the sake of our community, and that it's safe for everyone. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I think we all understand that there's a lot of input. If this works, great. If we needed to modify it a little bit, we are going to. This doesn't cast everybody in concrete. We're going to be reasonable about this. If Bill or Jimmy come to us and request we make a minor modification, we're going to be as cooperative as we can to serve the greater good for the community and the people. So, you know, if we'll need to tweak it, we'll tweak it. If not, we'll all move forward, and it'll come out good. So with that understanding, I'd like to move ahead.
Yeah. So the only background checks that are going to be done are going to be to the homeless. Fossilize that in your mind, okay? If you've personally ever been homeless. If you haven't, I don't think it's possible unless you have a family member that has been in that situation. I think the restrictions that are being brought right now are very restrictive. How many of our disadvantaged populations get harassed by the authorities? At least every week, when I face a homeless individual, their story is relayed to me as a harassment from certain authorities. Their boxes of chocolates are taken away from them. This 19-year-old needed to pay for a room to stay, but when his chocolate was taken by a police officer and laughed in his face, he was not able to pay for that room for that night. I heard that story. It was told to me. Is anybody going to call that homeless person a liar, or because he wants to dress very well and intertwine with us, make it seem like he's not homeless? Am I to degrade and discredit him when he gets put in jail, and he's learned a lot of the rules and the tricks to face the authorities so that he doesn't get his ass whipped? How many of our homeless have been approached by any free legal counsel organization to expunge their records, to have a warm night in 2019? There is nothing reasonable, nothing cooperative, nothing collaborative that's being done despite the illusion up here. I don't see any of our homeless people here advocating for themselves, because guess what? They have to know what they're going to eat. They're so worried about Maslow's hierarchy of law to see where they're going to sleep tonight, not to find out how they're going to drive from Seventh Street, three blocks over, and it's going to take them four hours if that's how long they have to walk. I'm truly saddened to see the politics getting in the way. What's interesting is that the homeless person may be a functioning person who hasn't been able to acquire housing for lack of economic sustainability and whatnot. I didn't realize that CDBG funding from the federal government allowed taxpayer dollars to prejudice child molesters, gays who've used drugs, addicts, meths, and so forth. This council speaks of those without a roof over their head as if they're leprosy, if they have that leprosy. I'm not sure why this council had put rules and regulations to stop someone who has paid their restitution, and they continue to be paying their debt consistently. I'm saddened to see the approach to this warming shelter as one, that we get to pick and choose what the taxpayer dollars are going to go. The government system and the appointed commissioners bring in perspective their personal ethical, moral characteristics and resiliencies to those who will spend a night at a shelter. Next time, when we say we're doing such a good job, when you end up being homeless and you get accused of molesting someone, but you don't have the resources to defend yourself, and that tags you for the rest of your life and you have to deal with it, remember, that person next time might actually get a mentor to sit right here where we're at and start advocating for us. That's the power that we have and we should implement, not the one that we just thwarted right now. I think that's disgusting, and we are not serving our communities as elected officials.
All for the vote, Madam Mayor?
I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox, approving the amendment and the background checks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the roll call for that voting?
Right now, I have Jones and Cox as a yes, and Gomez and Ramirez as a no.
Thank you.
Yes.
Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez and Mayor Pro Temmer Ramirez voting no.
Now we move on to item D six, ratification of the acceptance of Federal Aviation Administration Grant Agreement. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors ratify the acceptance of grant agreement number 3-06-0359-025-2019 between the United States of America, acting through the Federal Aviation Administration and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, in the amount of $315,000 in support of the install weather reporting equipment. Project number CC 20-044 and adopt resolution number SCLA 19-008, increasing budgeted grant revenues by $315,000, increasing grant expenditures by $315,000, and reducing operation expenditures by $193,500.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by council members? Three-minute time limit. Ms. Gomez?
Yeah, so I have a question. If I can reminisce, as far as a couple of years, a year ago, we had something similar, and I remember it was the spreadway, whatever you call it, where the airplanes are landing. You have a specific wording for that. We had phases that we were, we had grants. So I'm assuming perhaps that this has something to do with it, but I see the word ratification as there has to be a change for some regard.
You were correct. We did have phases for the runway project. What we're asking the federal government for, we have asked the federal government for, was a grant this year for a weather system that is, quite frankly, more urgent now than the completion of the runway. So they were, we were asked to take a year off in our phased approach, and now we're coming back through, let me back up for a moment. We have a phased approach, and in that phased approach, we're asking for this year, as opposed to doing concrete, for us just to get the instrumentation up. The concrete project will continue henceforth next year.
And my other question is, thank you for, the runway, that's what I forgot. So are we at risk of the former approval that we had? So I'm, so let's see. So you took a rest for a year. So I'm assuming that we have monies perhaps that have already been pre-allocated, but there also is a possibility that funding is still there available so that we can reappropriate to the phases that are, we're going through. But I wanted to know if there's a risk of us losing that because we're altering, we're altering the contract, so to speak, or the settlement, or have we, what's in that?
Good question. We've coordinated that very closely with the FAA, so they understand that this is a higher need for right now. And the reason this is a higher need is the pavement that was in the worst condition on the runway has been replaced, that last 5,900 feet that we did last year. So they understand and appreciate the prioritization that we're doing here.
So with that understanding, I'm going to presume that perhaps there's zero effect, meaning we're going to reinstitute the monies, and they'll be able to give the award as if nothing had happened?
Yes. The general concept is yes, but understand, we have not received a grant for that. So it's not like there's been money that's been appropriated or not appropriated. This is, this is a separate project. So the monies that we had, the $225,000 you see here, that was assuming that we would have had to pay that out of our own operating funds. Instead, we were able to get the FAA to fund the project. So what we're just asking for is to essentially move some money from, in different fund categories, to lessen our out-of-pocket burden.
Okay. And then just for clarification, FAA also stands for a Federal Association of a Government. Is that correct? The word federal comes up here, but FAA.
Yeah, it's Federal Aviation Administration.
Thank you.
Not to be confused with the Future Farmers of America.
Thank you. No further questions.
Anyone else?
None.
None. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. That are all the questions. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the Board of Directors of SCLA take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D seven, ratification of license agreement by and between Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Classic Films, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors ratify the license agreement by and between Classic Films and the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority in the amount of $619,650 and adopt resolution number SCLA 19-009, increasing budgeted operation revenues by $619,650 and increasing budgeted operation expenditures by $325,000.
Thank you. Questions of staff by council members? Ms. Jones?
None. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes. So I was reading this, and despite the recommendation for the resolution to be adopted tonight, it seems like the language that I'm reading here, I mean, I don't have trouble with what's being recommended, it's just when I see Boeing choosing to facilitate improvements of the payment near the leaseholder or their hangar, and then other parts, money being exchanged, I feel that it's being compartmentalized, and that's probably part of the, I'm going to call it settlement or agreement or what's happening, but I, there's a feel of compartmentalization, and it does, it's not specific that it is doing that. It's just my reading and interpretation of this.
I'm not, I'm not certain exactly what that means, compartmentalization. What I am certain was it was a negotiated agreement that free parties freely entered into, and they were for the full benefit of all of us. So the benefit being that the airport authority received fair compensation, very fair compensation for the, for providing the facility and the staffing, and also it provided us an opportunity to make a concrete repair that's been long overdue to service one of our largest tenants. So essentially Boeing and the airport negotiated in our mutual best efforts for our best benefit, that would serve everyone that needs a taxi there, airplane across that section.
Then I almost feel like the language to procure my own understanding of this means we're like a broker. The city of Victorville has become that broker in some regards. That's in layman's terms, in order for me to understand what's happening with this settlement contract.
Maybe that's the way to look at it. Also, another way to look at would be we're the operator of the airport, so we own the utility. So it would be most appropriate for the owner of that property to make those improvements.
The owner being the city of Victorville.
Technically, the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority that you currently are representing. So the airport would make the improvements to its own infrastructure.
Because I know, like, for example, COMAV, COMAV purchased the land, but because that is somehow federal land, they can't keep and own it, so it has to be given back to the city. And so that's where I'm getting the understanding of, we're kind of like a broker, but like you said, perhaps not necessarily because of the federal regulations.
Right.
Okay. Well, I just needed that clarification for my personal understanding. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for further clarification, that COMAV has not purchased any land. They rent land that we own, that the airport authority owns. And I'm not sure where the term settlement keeps coming from, but this is a license agreement. This was the right for the filming company to use SCLA property, and SCLA received a financial benefit in the realm of about $300,000 revenue, and then we also received money to do an additional $300,000 capital improvement.
Yeah. So I did speak with Craig Garrick, and 20 years ago, he made a purchase and gave it right back. And so that's my language coming from COMAV. If that's not what it is, I mean, that's the language he provided, and that's the language that I can communicate to be able to understand this particular item. And the word agreement, I think you said, keeps popping up, but you don't see it here.
Settlement.
Settlement. Okay. So I'm not an attorney, and my word for contract or settlement are AKA synonymous to an agreement. So if I misspoke and misuse the word, I'm not technically inclined, unless I take my three-year law schools. I'm working on my doctoral degree, and hopefully in that regard, I will get that language. But I appreciate you pointing that out, because I was using words interchangeably. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards on this item, so we need a motion and a second.
I make a motion to adopt the recommendation that's set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D eight, piggyback purchase of three 2020 Ford F-550 crew cab utility four-by-four, four-by-two trucks. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council and the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award downtown Ford sales the piggyback purchase of three 2020 Ford F-550 crew cab utility four-by-two trucks in the total amount of $339,691.32 under the State of California Contract Number
Thank you. Any questions of staff on this item? Now, my understanding is that this was budgeted, so it was a budgeted item, correct? Okay.
That's correct.
Any questions by council members of staff? Gomez?
Yeah. So I usually have to bring up the terminology when we use the word piggyback. Piggyback is a word that could be considered very negative in terms of who are millions and billions, or millions and thousands of dollars are being offered. And so when I look at the word piggybank, I don't necessarily think it's sole source, one... And so, when I look at the word piggybank, I don't necessarily think it's sole source, one track where you can only provide all the vehicles from one item. But if that is the case here, I don't recall reading the word sole source, but the piggyback here is just concerning because it always is going to be, you know? It's been my third year here and if we've been doing a contract with someone a little bit more than three or four years and we don't have resolutions or any kind of municipal code or purchasing department clauses, I think it deems a little bit more reminder, you know, as how we're looking at business dealings in terms of piggybacks.
Yeah. In this item, we're just leveraging a cooperative purchasing agreement. It's been vetted and the vehicles have been bid in a sense, so we're just utilizing that to be able to get our vehicles.
Okay. And then, which reminded me, Long Beach for our League of California Cities was very instrumental in a lot of the questioning that I do that are very technical, especially from the perspective of the vendor. What is it that the city of Victorville in terms of its piggyback or in the purchasing department doing so that it gets more widespread? It's just not narrowly tailored to the same organizations who know the program and can get in because they know the rope, so to speak? What are we doing to create the leverage for those newcomers? Are we doing any research? Are we becoming even more open rather than just saying, "Look at the website, figure it out" kind of type of deal? Because that's what I've been doing, figuring it out and giving it to vendors. What are we doing? What is the process in that regard coming forth?
Yeah. We've had a request for bids go out to 32 different agencies twice.
And so, that's something that we continuously practice, I'm presuming.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
I have a question. In the purchase of these two particular trucks, what is, how many is it replacing? Just two others? And how old are they, those that are being replaced?
It's actually three trucks in this item and it'll replace three trucks and they're 2009 vehicles. Generally, we'll run them longer than that, but these three engines have some design flaws that are just costly right now, so it's the appropriate time to replace them.
Okay. Thank you.
I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You know, I propped up with another question. You know, we're talking about design flaws. Is that synonymous to manufacturing designs or is that just operation and maintenance of the spectrum of its usage?
Manufacturing.
Okay. And was there a recall that we found out about this of any sorts?
No.
And then, what's the expected life? I'm sure there's not Kelly Blue Book, but something synonymous that tells us the lifespan. It's been almost 10 years, right?
Yeah. These ran 10 years. That's still pretty good.
Okay. So, typically, it's a 10-year and then it needs a replacement?
We evaluate it case by case. It just, we'll get as much life as we can out of the vehicle, you know? You look at your operational costs, your fuel mileage, everything about it to see when. So, and sometimes we'll pass them down to other departments as well.
Okay. And with this particular, did we create an option of having something refurbished if that was a possibility from the manufacturer? And I'm thinking in terms of, it's my vehicle personally, I don't have a lot of pocket money, so I'm going to look at different options rather than, you know, have a pocketful of money, let's just do this or that.
Yeah. We do refurbish some vehicles, but keep in mind, we run these every day of the week for multiple hours, so it's not like your, you know, your vehicle, you drive to work and drive home once a day. These run all day and work really hard.
Thank you.
No other questions?
Thank you.
I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D9, standard construction agreement between Boeing Engineering and Environmental for power pole removal located in the Southern California Logistics Airport territory. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-084 amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2019-2020, approve the award of a standard construction agreement to Boeing Engineering and Environmental for the removal of power poles located on Innovation Way and Phantom Street within the Southern California Logistics Airport territory, Project Number CC 20-020, in the amount not to exceed $118,000 and appropriate $18,000 from the Vemis Electrical Fund.
Thank you. Any questions of staff by council members?
Yeah. So, I noticed that we're going to have relocation of these power lines, but my curious question is, I know this particular one is made out of wood, which I think would be kind of like archaic or esoteric when we start thinking about it. It's 15 years and I get it, but we're in the 21st century. Are we using something other than wood?
Generally, the industry practices wood. They're cheaper to maintain and to design and install. These poles are actually coming out of service. We no longer use them. So, they do have conductors on them that are not, that are not active any longer, adjacent to Edison facilities that are active. So, we're removing them to basically eliminate any liability, potential wind damage knocking our lines down into Edison lines, so that's why they're being removed, so.
But I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
One else? No? I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Thank you so much. Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
So, I make a motion to adopt what is recommended and invite my council to go ahead and make the motion and adopt this.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D10, that the City Council approve the joint use agreement with the Town of Apple Valley for the Mojave River Walk project. Are there any questions by staff of council members? Questions from council members of staff at this time? Three-minute time limit. Ms. Gomez, do you have any questions?
Yes. So, I've noticed that the subject line says joint use. We just celebrated or did the rev and cutting ceremony for the Mojave River Walk. And so, it just dawned on me, are we putting the horse before the carriage or that analogy? I thought we would have had this beforehand and then did the ceremony, not anticipating that it would be approved because then that would kind of be saying that we're all bought for in terms of votes and everybody knows how we're going to vote. And that goes for any item that I don't think staff should know and be predictive about it, but it just questions the principle of how we do other types of administrative recommendations. And this is just something so minor, but it could be something potentially so big, in my opinion, the details versus something more mass.
Normally, this agreement would have gone earlier. The reason it didn't is frankly that it was, it was a part of the trail that was missed in the other maintenance agreements. It's between maintenance agreements that cover the flood control district part of the project and the regional parks part of the project. And when the Yuculoma Bridge right-of-way was acquired by the Town of Apple Valley, there's a little piece between those two segments that Apple Valley owns. And quite frankly, it was an oversight on our part because it wasn't included in the other agreements. So, this is really, it's kind of a cleanup item just to make sure that the maintenance responsibilities are defined.
Right. And I'm looking at the picture that was provided for the council and the audience for this agenda item, and it does have like a specific drawing that kind of goes over the highway, if that's the highway, and it marks almost like a crooked type of hammer in my imagination. But, I mean, I'm not sure what, is that like a project that we're going to make sure that we connect the extension of the river project or we're just dissecting that this is Apple Valley and this is Victorville and that's how they may be connected in the future?
So, the, in Attachment A, which is an aerial image, that shows the Yuculoma Bridge and then that shape is actually the bike path itself that lies within the Yuculoma right-of-way. So, that's the part that we're responsible for maintaining that, just the path itself. And we have the right to go in there and maintain it. So, that's basically what that exhibit shows.
Thank you. And then, several of the questions, as I went around, did my rounds with a lot of the community that were at the Mojave River Walk, was the question that I didn't know how to answer was, is there a fee when we enter the Mojave River? Right? And the other one was, is it all paved or is there certain portions that are one versus another?
Well, there's a spur of the path that goes into the regional park. It's about .8 miles long and the entire path is concrete, so it's all paved. And if you enter the park on the path, it's free. There's no charge. If you enter the park through Park Road, there's a kiosk there and they will charge you.
So, now that I know that, is there signage that can kind of say to someone who's at the kiosk, you know, if you would like to waive this fee and you don't want to pay, you can always enter towards that direction?
I don't believe so. I went there recently and I don't think there's any sign like that. And that would really be up to the regional park because they're the ones that manage the facility.
Right. So, in other words, if I'm someone who doesn't have the dollar bill at that moment to pay and I had an option to enter a different way, that would be my personal way of doing the extra length. So, you're saying you either can pay if you enter one way, but if you enter another one, it's free despite the fact if you're aware or unaware, you can still use the pathway, it's just going to cost you or not cost you depending on the entryway?
Yeah. And again, that's not in the city's control. The park, the regional park manages that, but I believe they charge $3 if you walk in or ride a bicycle, but if the Mojave River Walk path is used, it's free.
Brian, my understanding is the part of the path that we've constructed that enters into the Mojave Narrows Regional Park, it's not free access beyond the path. My understanding is the way we constructed the path, it's fenced in or, I guess fenced in is probably the best way to illustrate it. Saying it differently, my understanding is you can't just freely without jumping over a fence get into the park through our bike path.
That was discussed early on, but actually, there's not a fence. So, as you go into the regional park, you could access the park. There's really nothing to prevent that. No, that was a discussion early on with the regional park staff as they thought about maybe a fence to prevent that, but it's actually access. You can go to a restroom or access the park.
No further questions. Thank you.
Yes, I have a question.
Just a curiosity. It says here that there are sufficient funds in the current fiscal year budget to cover any anticipated maintenance expenses. How much money is that and for how long will that money be funded? How much would it carry? Would it last for a year or two years or, do you know?
I don't know the amount. The maintenance would be relatively minor. It's a concrete path. I think that, you know, Mr. Matthews might be able to answer some of the activities, but I remember there's things like, you know, if there happens to be any trash or debris on the path, cleaning that up, it's relatively minor.
Well, it says sufficient funds and I was just wondering, is that basically Victorville's sufficient funds that we're talking about?
Yes. Because we're responsible for maintaining that, that path.
Okay.
Even though it's not within our city limits, that was the way the maintenance agreement was set up.
And my assumption is that Apple Valley has its own sufficient funds for the 500 feet that it's within the River Walk?
Yes. And again, Victorville's only responsible for the path itself, nothing else.
Nothing else? No landscaping, no vandalism, nothing thrown in the river? Because I saw a picture with a mattress in it and I just thought, you know?
If you're, if you're talking about the...
I'm sorry I mentioned it, but anyway. Somebody brought it to my attention on Saturday and said, "Do you know there's a mattress?" I said, "I thought that was only in the picture." I didn't go looking for it, but I was just wondering, you know?
Well, in regard to the part of the path that goes under the Yuculoma Bridge, we're only responsible for maintaining the path itself.
Okay. So, and if there was insufficient funds, who would be asking for the funds in regards to the budget? The parks? Park and Rec?
No. Staff, Victorville staff would. We would include that in our budget request because we're responsible for the maintenance.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, and another question spur. Since we're doing the joint use agreement with these two entities and we did expend monies, but they were pre-allocated on a budgeting year that you said right now has been done. I noticed that we provided a VVTA award. Did that come with the funding?
Thirty seconds.
I mean, I don't understand the reasoning for the award for VVTA, I guess, and I was wondering if the award of this and the joint use was really something that narrowed it or is that just something completely different?
There's no connection between VVTA and this item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's, those are all the questions. I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion and a second.
So, move, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes. Maybe I misspoke when I said VVTA, but it was, there's a little wording here that I associate with VVTA. I know it's Transportation Authority, but that's not what I should have said. There was a pedestrian and bicycle award that went, that I associated with VVTA. I think it was given to Mr. Schmitty or something like that. I just wanted to really clarify what this joint agreement with Apple Valley and with the Mojave River Project had to do with awarding someone with a pedestrian, walk, bicycle type. I didn't know if there was a connection and if we expended monies because everything that the city gives, whether it's a plaque and it goes back to the use agreement of the Mojave River Project, was there a connection or that's just something that the city decided to do on its own, nothing to do with this, even though it was implemented at the same time?
I'm not familiar with any connection to that. Was, are you referring to an award?
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm not, there is no connection between that and this agreement.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D11, appointment to Community Services Advisory Committee. Any action is at the discretion of the City Council, therefore, at this time, I would ask Councilmember Gomez to present the item.
So, last time that I tried to implement and use Councilmember Mayor Ramirez's agenda item because it was open to all appointees, it wasn't granted, so I had to do my own. So, now, it's going to be a part of the process. I will no longer have to invite the nomination necessarily. I'll bring it upon. So, today, I have one individual. I don't know if the city got anybody else, but for sure, I let this particular individual know that there's a Community Services Advisory Committee appointment and he turned something into Keith Messler as email-formatted, so he should have that. And I believe, I recall correctly, he also sent it to council and he has a hard copy just in case none of us have any hard copies in front of us, but this individual is ready to give his resume and to let it, see if he is someone that the City Council as a whole and my nomination of him becomes approved today.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, as I was surprised to hear that something was sent to me, I am looking at my email now and at 6:13 PM this evening, I received a letter from a Mr. Ramiro Rodriguez. I can forward that email to you. It appears to be a letter expressing interest in serving on the CSAC. There's two documents attached. There's also a document that serves as Mr. Rodriguez's resume. Just now, I'm seeing that in my email. I can forward that to you, but that is the name of the individual expressing interest, I suspect, on behalf of Councilmember Gomez.
Madam Mayor, may I, so as council is not permitted to be on the internet while we're in a meeting, I would certainly like to see hard copies of the documents.
Correct.
So this item will have to wait.
And just since it was mentioned, I've got no record in my system of having received anything yesterday. I did just forward electronically as well to the council.
Would it be proper to agendize this for the next meeting and make copies of whatever we have here so that we can have time to study it?
I'll make that motion.
Proper, I'll second it.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Agendize and move to the next meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries with Mayor Garcia voting no.
Now we move on to public comments or, let's see.
We still have C12 and C13.
Correct. We are going back to consent counter, item C12 and C13.
So for this one, it's probably very minor. It's more technical and if you can, it's just a basic term. I think that it's mostly used in your field rather than in my understanding of its interpretation. And so when I looked at the word vacate, which is abandon, I started to perceive that perhaps what we were doing is there's, and I'm going to call it an agreement or a contract, what's happening in this regard, it was being altered or changed. So that's probably not the case, but you're the expert and you can help clarify with the easement, what is really happening. And again, I'm perceiving this as some kind of ratification or alternation because I'm taking that interpretation with abandonment and vacation to vacate something.
Okay. Yeah, this is a rather routine procedure. So on this particular property, there was already a drainage easement, which it reserved a part of the property for stormwater to flow through the property. Now that the applicant wants to develop the property, they actually did a study, a drainage study, to show more accurately where the storm flows would go. So now it makes sense to basically vacate or erase the old easement and then record a new easement that is more accurate to contain the storm flow. So it's basically just exchanging one easement for another.
Thank you. And then for C13. Yeah, so this one I noticed, I don't know if that's just technical with there being an error or a mistake or something with the RFQ that needs to go back out, but there is a rejection of a specific proposal that was received for the library's master plan. So anytime there is a rejection of any kind of bidding, it really sparks a questioning of it because usually our streamlined, I would hope streamlined processes of RFQs and RFPs, which are a little different, usually go smoothly. But something like this really says staff perhaps caught something. They were looking at this and this requires City Council to note that it didn't go through. And so it makes me want to question why we would reject a bid once it went through. It's money, it costs time, it costs individuals to come back. They're probably not going to bid it again because they're not going to know about it unless we directly say, hey, you put in a bid, but there was an error. And I don't know if that's part of the process.
Yes, Madam Mayor, City Council, as discussed in the staff report, we had a situation with this bid where once we received only one bid after the bid was sent out to over 45 different firm, potential bidders, there was obviously something that went wrong. So our purchasing department did send out some follow-up emails to try to understand what happened. And that is when we discovered that in our effort to be thorough and request options in terms of the type of facilities we might consider, that was interpreted as the need for a lot of architecture work, which we did not really intend to happen. So in this case, we are proposing to reject the bid so we can reformat that some and make that a little more clear for potential bidders to rebid the project. It is absolutely possible this one firm may decide they do not want to submit another bid, but that's certainly up to them.
So I'm going to state that I'm not going to reconstruct what you just said, but this is not based on the last version of what you just spoke about. What I'm really interested in finding out is, we said there was only one bidder. It may be conscientious that everybody's aware that one bidder is, hey, we didn't do our due diligence perhaps. But it really tells me something about the processing externally, the silence of what is being, I don't know the process. You know, I've asked to have that process enumerated to me on several occasions and there was one workshop, but one workshop didn't do for me, sorry. I need more Mr. Mendilla, but of course that's up to the CEO and I could probably do something else to try to make sure I sit in with you and understand the process. But then you also said the money was the issue. So I started thinking, okay, it's only one bidder. What's wrong with one bidder doing the bid? If that's the best bidder, the only bidder, and the money, if he's charging perhaps an exuberant amount and we didn't catch that others, other structures need to come in play, what's wrong with that when we do have the purchasing clause that states it's not necessarily the lowest bidder? So here, you know, it may be oxymoronic for me to try to argue this pathway, but it's just for me to understand.
And I won't speak to all of the bids, but in this particular case, I can just elaborate to tell you that there is a proposal that was submitted in addition to the documents that were provided as an attachment. And that proposal gave some additional detail that showed that the architecture work was over 70% of the total bid, which in this case was a clear indication that that's just not what we were looking for. So not only did the bid come in more than we anticipated, it was not the type of work we intended for it to be.
Thank you.
One else, have any questions? No? I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Need a motion in a second?
It's supposed to be approved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to our public comments. And three-minute time limit. And I do have some cards. Christine Quick will be the first one. And after Christine, Mark Vine. Christine, is she here? No. Mark Vine. After Mark will be Ingrid Hitt.
Hi there. Hi, my name is Mark and I've been a resident of Victorville for over 10 years. And I myself and a lot of my neighbors and sure, a lot of people in the community have the same concerns as I. I have just organized a neighborhood watch, Crime Watch program that where we all meet at a specific spot to talk about the crimes that are going on in Victorville and throughout the city. And basically, you know, we have a number of crimes. We basically met through this Neighborhood Watch, this Neighbors App, which is a Ring Alert App that is, that you can get online. And we all banded together to show our concerns about the crimes that are happening in our neighborhood. And we noticed that they have been increasing dramatically over the years. And we have a lot of concern regarding that with cars being broken into, houses being broken into, vandalism, stores being robbed, you know, left and right. I mean, there's just things just happening. And we just want basically, you know, the community, you know, to step in and help the Sheriff's Department out and the police. And basically, we, we need to, you know, we need to have more officers out there, you know, than anything because there's a lot of citizens that are going through a lot right now. And they're scared. They're scared to leave their homes, they're scared to walk around their neighborhoods and I don't think this is right. And I don't think it's right that us, the residents of Victorville, have to go patrol our own neighborhoods, you know? That's something we shouldn't have to do. That's the police job. You know, our officers, they need help. We're here to support them and we want them, you know, to support us. And, you know, that's, I organized this meeting to try to get people to band together on this. But I don't see too many people here speaking on this topic, which is, you know, really frustrating. And I think a lot of people, actually people were here, but this meeting kept dragging on for so long that they actually left. But that's one of our main concerns that we have is the crime in our neighborhoods. We need to do something about it. And there needs to be some changes made. And I shouldn't be the only one speaking on the behalf of, you know, all the citizens out there because there's thousands and thousands of them, you know, that have the same concern as I. And I'm speaking on behalf of them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ingrid.
Here, I have an app on Ring and there's so many crimes being committed. You can't even see the streets anymore.
Fills up the whole map.
Fills up the whole map, our area. And, you know, our law enforcement needs help and... Are you listening?
Are you listening?
Yeah, are you listening? Because you're looking away when I...
You're talking to us as a team, not to me.
I know.
Okay? So address us as a team.
They're watching me.
Address as a team. I'm probably correlating a workshop so that I can say something on your behalf. Did he ever run on you?
So, we're requesting for the funds to start being put, funds for our law enforcement. We need more law enforcement officers. They need help. This Victorville is getting bigger. People are coming up here, you know, and they're just getting more behind. You know, there's the per ratio, officer per ratio per capita, you know, for citizens is not there. You know, they can't keep up on these things, you know? And it's not our responsibility to be out there patrolling our cities, patrolling our communities, you know? We just had an alert here that somebody just, somebody, the home invasion, four guys, you know? And this is a constant thing. It's an everyday thing. And people are scared out there. And we'd like to form a coalition. We're getting, we're, we're having Neighborhood Watch meetings and a lot of people are frustrated, concerned, scared, you know? And one of the things we'd like to know is, we've been here for like over 20 years. We've never seen the crime like it's been. And so where is all, you know, where are these? Where's it coming from? Why all of a sudden are we being hit left and right? People breaking into cars, people breaking into homes, being, you know, attempted kidnappings with their children. And they're being robbed, harassed, burglaries, mail theft. Our even our own officers are being shot at. What is that?
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Humana Ayali? I don't know if I'm pronouncing him correctly. Humana? No? D-Mac? D-Mac? John? Maggie Martin?
Okay. October 15th, 2019, no Victorville council meeting. So what does Gomez do to fill up her free time? She shows up at a Hesperia City Council meeting to bark up their council tree. One person was PMing me, Your Honor, right from the meeting. Does she not understand that she is not welcomed at Hesperia's meetings? I will continue to maintain my position about her as a council member, which is this: inept, disrespectful, rude, which I just saw, unprepared and playing the victim. She can't even cut it as a council member here because she's too busy sticking her nose in where it doesn't belong elsewhere and everywhere. Read this, Blanca, you are not welcome in Hesperia. And you are lucky so far that someone over there hasn't kicked your dumb ass for all the stunts you've pulled. And they don't give two hoots about anything you say. You are stuck on stupid sister. I would think you would not, I would think you would know by now not to go where you're not wanted. You're not even wanted in Victorville. Why would you dare to even think you'd be well-received in Hesperia? Damn. Okay? That was posted on the 17th. The council meeting was on the 15th. How this came to my attention that she was there is because I got a Messenger post from a lady who was a PM at the meeting, who I don't even know. And here's what it says, and I did coin one of her phrases. Okay, and there's language. Victorville Councilwoman Blanca Gomez is really fucking annoying and why the hell is she here barking up Hesperia City Council member's tree? Blah, blah, blah. Go back to Victorville, please. That's the general sentiment, exactly. That's the general sentiment of everybody over there. So that being said, another person around the same time period of this posting that day, the next day, excuse me, said that, I viewed part of it, I was having difficulty with my connection with their meeting over there. And half of it was in Spanish, half of it was in English. And I didn't want anyone to talk about the outfit. Looked like she'd just been to the Goodwill that morning or something, I don't know. And, nothing wrong with that, though. And, because other people commented on it. And somewhere along the line in her rhetoric about some, the cost of something, I want you to tell, I'm going to tell you, quote what she said, I'm going to quote it for you. Blah, 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 cost $1,500,000. Let that sink in for a moment, folks. $1,500,000. Could you please show me how to write that on a check, Your Honor? That's $1,500,000. Maybe your glasses, you weren't wearing them or whatever the case might be. But do you, does she not hear herself when she speaks? I really don't think so. I already know the answer. No, she doesn't hear herself when she speaks. Otherwise, she wouldn't make an ass out of herself like that. Thank you.
Deanne Hodgins.
Good evening. Mine's kind of a piggyback on the couple that were up here speaking about the crime, except I've been visiting different communities and stuff, visiting family and things. And I walk into a Winco in another town. The sidewalk is clean, the parking lot's clean. It's, you don't, you don't wonder what you're walking in and wonder what you're going to be taking into your home when you leave. And why isn't ours like that? They're the same companies. Don't the same companies have to maintain the Wincote in San Marcos that maintain it in Victorville? Why does our city allow our parking lots and our entrances to our grocery stores and et cetera to look so terrible? And how many of those are right off the freeway where people are passing through? And maybe need to stop. When we travel, we stop at grocery stores often. Sandwiches, candy, fruit, whatever. I'm embarrassed to think that the people in the parking lot that are traveling through or that are visiting family and friends in Victorville think, oh, let's just, you know, stop by the State of Brothers, or let's just go stop by the, the CVS, or the, or the whatever it may be. I'm embarrassed for them to walk into my community and see that. My house doesn't look like that. I, I really think it's horrible. I can't imagine that we don't have some kind of an enforcement provision through our city that would require these businesses to maintain a level of cleanliness when the parking lot, the sidewalk, inside the stores, some of them are better than others, but the outside is really what I think is really, really bad. And I really wish that we could do something about that. The other thing is, how, what about our, our yard sale signs that are everywhere, all over our community? You know, couldn't we get a citizens group together? I mean, we have the Citizens on Patrol for the Sheriff's Department. Could we do something like that for the city of Victorville, that we could go through our neighborhoods, our, you know? We could meet, we could decide what we're going to do, so that our city looked better, so that it was more appealing when people were driving around. And as you all know, Victorville has been my home for many years. His since he was born. So, we really do have a long history here, and we really do care about the city. And I hope that we can do something to address not only the crime, which of course is a, is a universal issue California-wide, but just the appearance of our city. It really, our city hall looks great. What about the mattresses that are stacked in front of people's houses? If they were stacked in front of city hall, then they'd be hollowed off. So, I just, I just want to offer that as, as a option. Let's get some people involved that could do something about it. Thank you.
Wow, it's a full plate today, from the rain to the wind causing dirtiness in the stores. I understand everything's happening. I'd like to just clarify about the Ring. A lot of those maps are just lost pets. Another thing, the Ring can also work against you with the civil forfeiture laws that are so powerful right now. If somebody goes knocking to your door and the police officer sees that person's a wanted person, they could actually take your house away and say you were, you were possibly working connection with that person ringing your doorbell. And they have actually proof that person was there, whether he's buying a refrigerator, stereo, stove, or something. So be very careful how you use that Ring. A lot of people do, are very responsible and do provide information about crimes being committed. I'm pretty sure the police officers know everything that's going on. Seventy-five police officers, they can't be everywhere. It's good that we're policing ourselves, but some of the people just go overboard, just because people go knocking on your door, they're suspicious. They want to sell you Girl Scout cookies, or they want to sell you, paint your, your, their numbers. And there's some people out there just knocking on doors. But if there's crimes around there, get some lights, get some sensors, get cameras. My neighbor got her window broken into, or her car. She got one of those Ring lights, it lights up the whole thing, and nothing happens. They're going to go to the next house that doesn't have it. It's just common sense things. About everything here in Victorville, we're growing. Used to be 40,000 people. It's one kind of people. Now there's different kinds of people. I go to the store, I see fruits I've never seen before, from Middle Eastern, Asian, from everywhere. In Victorville, especially Apple Valley, but Victorville is really growing. So, it's, I don't think it's 122,000 people, it's more than that. Total up here in the, on the high desert, we're, we're getting close to 300,000 people. So, more people are coming, more cars, more trash, needs to be addressed. Maybe we need, well, now we have the people from the city working five days instead of four. Maybe we need to employ more people. Maybe we need to adjust our funds to contract more people, rather than losing those funds to litigation. Simple things, simple things that can be really assessed very easily and really, really change the situation. There's a lot of funds out there being taken up uselessly. I'm not going to get into it right now, but we'll probably fund maybe 15, 16 more officers onboard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have for public comments. So now we will have our report from our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. A few items to report coming up. Looking forward to this Monday, November 11th, that's our 23rd Annual Veterans Day Parade and Ceremony. The event is going to kick off in the morning, about 8:45, with a Freedom Mile Run, that's up and down Seventh Street. And we'll have a parade and concluding with the actual ceremony. The event runs from 8:45 to 11:00. If you want to be a part of the Mile Run, registration for that event takes place at about 8:15. Also, we have Food for Fine's library campaign going on now through December 18th. That's an opportunity for you to donate non-perishable food items. In an exchange, you can get some of your fees reduced for your library fees. Baker's Book Club program now through Sunday, November 23rd, open to children and students aged four through 12. Achievement certificates are issued based on total number of pages read. That's going to be held at the Victorville Library, nine to one on November 23rd. Free Dump Day is on Saturday, November 16th. And then of the development activities or engineering activities worth mentioning, probably the most notable at this point in time is a skateboard park update. That project is out for bid, and we're actually scheduled to close bids, I'm sorry, start opening bids on November 21st. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, at this time, we will go into E3, which is a discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda, and that will be a three-minute item. I'll start with Ms. Gomez.
Yes, so, whether you believe it or not, when you come here and public comment, you don't understand if I'm looking right, left, up, or down. You don't understand my interpretation. Actually, I was formulating because I wanted the city council to know that if we had an informational workshop-
Excuse me, this is a-
I'm getting into it. Did you just hear me?
Item is to-
Informational workshop. Do not interrupt me. Every time you interrupt my three minutes, I'm not doing it to you. Part of that silence takes my minutes, but I'm doing it. Now, you're not, and you don't have the control or power over that one. So, that informational workshop that's related for individuals to understand what it takes a city to bring more police officers, first you have to understand the process of the cost. Do you want to pay more taxes? And if you do, I think we have to have a workshop and talk about it together. And that includes a second, and it includes the motion, and it includes people here saying, you know what? Let's talk about crime. Let's get another workshop over here, because we had two concerned citizens who are speaking on behalf of a lot of individuals who look at crime. So that's my motion, to bring an informational session to look at crime, the cost, and how we can assist to collaborate. Now, that's my motion. Can we get a second? And can we get it through? I don't know. I've just put it forth. So I'm waiting for my colleagues to see if they can second in and get it approved.
I second it.
Thank you.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Motion fails.
I don't have any other further agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I do. May I? Thank you. So, really to echo a couple sentiments from my colleague who just spoke. It is very important when audience members come to speak, and I had no prior knowledge that these two wonderful individuals were going to come before us and really give us some information that I think in large part we all already know. So, with that said, I'm interested in placing on the agenda of the November 19, 2019, an item for discussion and possible action, wherein we would begin a dialogue about how we might generate needed revenue to bolster the city's efforts to improve public safety in Victorville. With that said, Madam Mayor, I move that we place on the agenda of the November 19, 2019 meeting, an item for discussion and possible action, wherein we determine what next steps may be needed to generate needed revenue for public safety in order that we may set a more positive course for Victorville.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. If somebody will read that whole thing back to me.
I'm, I'm happy to. Yes, all right, so the motion, yeah, the motion is, I, I move that we place on the agenda of the November 19, 2019 meeting, an item for discussion and possible action, wherein we determine what next steps may be needed to generate needed revenue for public safety in order that we may set a more positive course for Victorville. In order that we may set a more positive course for Victorville.
Positive course for-
In terms of public safety.
I will second if it's for discussion.
I already have a second.
You second it. I second it. We need to have that discussion, and I guess some of my comments will be someplace else. But we spent months explaining to the public Measure K and the good it would do, number of additional police officers and code enforcement. And we had individuals who no better oppose that. And it got defeated by a very narrow margin. It would have added 15, it would have paid for 15 firefighters, eight policemen, two code enforcement officers. It would have relieved a huge chunk of the general fund for additional community cleanup and code enforcement and public safety. If we're going to have that kind of a discussion again, because we need to have the discussion, but first of all, the movers and shakers can't be opposing these things, as they did last election, and then complain about, we're not doing anything about crime. That doesn't make any sense. And, and on the other hand, we don't know why they opposed it. We're moving ahead, and we need to talk about the city. And I, I got something else to say, it's a different section here. It's about the dirtiness of the community. The community doesn't get dirty on its own, it's the people who live here are doing it. So, I'd like to talk about that. But if it's for a discussion, that we will cover all the things in regard to the community, including issuing citations and start fighting people. There, there's nothing that gets the attention of the public more than the threat of a fine when you violate the law. We talk about what we're going to warn, but we're not going to give a citation because that affects the people who least can afford to do it. Are we saying that only the poor break the law? I don't think so. And so, I think if we'll have all-inclusive discussion, and I don't mean just one night. I think this needs to go on several meetings with the public input, as much as we can have the public input. We need to do something in this community. It's overwhelming all of us. And second it because I want to have that discussion, but I want it all-inclusive. It's got to be all-inclusive. And we've got to be willing to punish people who break the law. And right now, we're not willing to do that, for some reason, not at all why. Want them to love us, so we see you throw something out the window, we're going to shake our finger, but not do anything about it? They're like little kids. They laugh and throw it out the other window. We've got to be all-inclusive. So, I second it for the discussion.
Well, if Councilmember Cox offers that as a substitute, I'm happy to second it.
I'm sorry, he can hear you.
Oh, so, I think we're all having problems with the mics this evening. So if Councilmember Cox offers that as a substitute motion, I'm happy to second it, to make the discussion all-inclusive.
Cox, is that your motion?
Yes.
Mr. Cox, can I add an amendment to that inclusiveness of yours? To include, since I, I would like to say that I totally agree with you. And if you remember, I mentioned about officers, police officers. Well, I've gotten to the point that I think that we, if we have a city fire department, maybe we need to have a city police department that's going to regulate and policy, go around and do the residence and help the resident. Because we need to do something. And I agree with all of you out there that says it's bad. I get tired of looking at people go through red lights and get killed, because there was a big one up here on the squally. But my whole point is, when we say inclusive, can we include every and anything, sir?
I, my belief is that we need to discuss everything in this community that adds or detracts from the quality of life.
Thank you.
Well, with, with that stated, I guess we, we put our comment and motions as a discussion, but nobody called that one out, which was very interesting. And of course, if I would have done that, it would be pointed out. And of course, I'm always going to place it on the record, because that is not fair when we have a lack of equanimity, and we're trying to discuss something that's going to help us. And, you know, I don't sanction you for having that discussion, because it's healthy. What I do sanction is, if there's one person, as myself, having to have that same conversation to be a chastise, I do do that. But what I wanted to state to this is, we can talk inclusive of all of this, which is the information, the cost, and what it's going to take, but it's going to go to the voters. So it doesn't matter if five, four, or three people say, yes, we need our own police force, or yes, let's give a 6.5 increase. It's not going to fly. You have to go out into the community and convince the voters that will vote to tax themselves. So don't bring it upon the city council like if it's our burden, because it's not. It goes out to the city community, which is you. And if you're willing to vote for an extra tax for yourself, you need to start putting advocating money for the people to vote for that. It's not going to fly up here. Up here, we're just going to discuss it. And we're going to spend more money to put it on taxpayer bottoms. But are they going to go and vote for that? We don't know. So the discussion here looks like it's going to go. I don't see the issue with that.
So, because this is a lengthy conversation, I just want to make sure that right now there was an amendment put forward to include, in the substitute motion, a discussion about changing to a city police force. So we need a motion, a second on that proposed amendment.
I'll second that.
On adding that language. So it, so then this, to be very clear then, is to only approve the added language to become part of the, the pending motion.
Clarification, Madam Clerk? On the motion, what are we voting for?
Well, Mayor Protem Ramirez made an amendment to add for the police, for our own city police department. That was her amendment. There's a, a motion. I don't have a second on hers yet.
Yes, Councilmember Gomez seconded that.
Okay, so we're clear.
Yeah.
So I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It was only going to be a discussion. That's all it was. We can still have that discussion. It doesn't matter.
Discussion is all-inclusive. We're going to talk about code enforcement, police department, fire department, everything.
There you go.
But if we talk about a particular item, it's going to be headlines if the city's considering a fire department or considering a police- Something. But that's the kind of discussion we need to have before we determine that. Will we lead to that eventually? We very well might.
That's why I'm thinking it should start with, with baby steps, and it will lead into that.
There's so many items that we'll probably divide it up into several discussions, because we need to have this discussion.
So I don't know what the result of that vote was.
So it seems like it's November 19, we only have one, but you suggested multiple conversations. So I don't know if that's going to be incorporated after the 19th of November.
I'm sorry, for the record, I need to get the vote on this last one. I have a no vote for-
The amendment.
For the amendment.
The amended language to have a, to include-
I have a no for Councilmember Jones and Councilmember Cox. Mayor Garcia?
No.
No? Okay, so that motion fails. So then we're- So then we're on to the amendment.
No, we're on to the substitute motion.
Substitute motion, I'm sorry. That all-inclusive. I have a first and a second on that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye, but I want to make sure that we, that all-inclusive is in the context of how it was originally described by Councilmember Cox.
Correct.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Ms. Ramirez, did you have anything to agendaise?
Can I make just remarks?
This is agendaise.
I'll come back to it.
Yes, I do. I have, oh, I'm sorry. Are you too many? Well, I don't know if this is under discussion items or not. About three years ago.
First job.
E three, right?
Yep.
Okay. About three years ago, I came back and reported to the council that I had been across country. And one of the things that I noticed in almost every city that I was in was trash containers in the parking lots of every commercial business that I was at. I took some pictures. In fact, the Walmart in Springfield has thirty-five trash containers. I came back here, the Walmart has two. And I talked to planning, can we make it a requirement? Can you propose? Can you discuss? Can you talk to management, to council, that this be a requirement of the city? That we have trash containers in all the parking lots because an individual drove up in the parking lot, sat and ate the McDonald's and threw all the trash out the window. And I inquired about can we cite those individuals? Turns out that the owner of that parking lot didn't post it properly. And I felt the city council should discuss, post it, require all businesses to have trash containers, and enter into some kind of a program where the trash container can have the city seal on it so we can be a participant and make sure that we advertise to pick up the trash. We need to set a standard for people to follow. Because when individuals pull into a parking lot, it is full of trash, they're likely to throw their trash out. If they pull into a parking lot and there's no trash, they're likely not to throw it out. We need to set the standard, and we need to be willing to put the money up, help pay for the containers, enforce it, and find those individuals. I did not get a second on that. I did not get it on the agenda. I also indicated that we give away free almost everything in the world. We pick up tires and furniture, that we need to post properties, and when we see someone, and we need to establish a policy, it's a thousand-dollar fine when you throw things out. The person that reports them and they're convicted get half the money. I turned out to be the bad guy because I was told, oh, well, soon as a spouse gets mad at the other, they'll report them. And the kids will get a spanking and turn in their father. Well, if they're breaking the law, they should be. But I was the bad guy, and I didn't get that on the discussion either. I want these things discussed because who's going to set the standard? Who's going to make sure that the neighborhoods, that code enforcement goes out and actually cites? I have a house in my neighborhood, they've been warned like ten times, and it's still nothing. We have to make the commitment to help set the standards to clean up the community, or it's not going to happen. And if we're not willing to do that, then this is all a lost cause.
You know, I kind of seem to agree with you. The only thing I could find issue is property owners and business owners have rights. And I don't know if we can impinge on them or if we would change our municipal code or policies to be able. But we can have the conversation.
Well, okay.
Have the conversation.
We need to get back on track here. Okay.
That's all I have to say. This.
Is that a motion to have that discussion at one of the next meetings?
Not yet. I'm hoping that that'll be a part of the discussion we have, and from there, we can lead into this thing. But I'm hoping those are part of the things that we discuss.
Since we're going to be discussing all kinds of problems that we have within our city.
Okay. Why would you report that on E three? That was an agenda item. You should have waited for the next one.
Then I'll make a motion to put it on the agenda if I'm going to be taking an issue for.
Right, you might as well.
I think it's already on the agenda.
Want to be out of order.
Because that was in.
Let's get this going here.
I have a second. Let me move on.
Well, I'll second it for you. I want you to be heard.
We have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Comments? I have a question for clarification.
All right.
So, which is permissible? And not wishing to make this an agenda item in and of itself, I think we've really teetered on really that requirement in the Brown Act. I think that already falls within the all-inclusive nature of what you described on the agenda item that we're going to already put on November nineteenth.
Okay, well, then I rescind my motion to second, so if someone else wants to second it.
There being no second, the motion fails.
Okay, now we move on to item E four. This is reports from council members, three-minute time limit. Ms. Gomez?
Quiero darles un reportaje a la comunidad de habla hispana, ya que es mi lengua natal, y yo hablo en español. Si es que ustedes están ofendidos, los que están aquí presentes, es mi lengua. Y tengo bajo la Constitución el derecho de hablar con las personas que no entienden lo que está sucediendo aquí, pero viene el desparpaje que están viendo, que es solamente un circo aquí. Quiero darles saber que su voz es su voto, aunque usted no pueda votar, tiene hijos, tiene familias, y lo que es más importante, tenemos una elección marzo tres, 2020. Hoy hubo una elección también, marzo, hoy, noviembre cinco, hubo otra elección que estamos votando para nuestra mesa directiva. Mucha gente nos salió, mucha gente nos hubo que hubo un voto hoy. Es más, no hubo respeto de ninguno de nosotros que estamos acá para disponer y decir hoy no hay una, hoy vamos a terminar a las cinco, a las seis, o no va a haber cita. ¿Por qué? Porque entre más el gobierno se mete en tu vida, no hay la responsabilidad que uno tiene que tener bajo lo que es la votación. Así que quiero recordarles que yo estoy disponible para ayudarles, y yo hablo el idioma, uso señas, que es algo que yo me gusta usar para ser parte de la comunidad. So now in English, for those of you that didn't understand what I was stating, that's my native language. And if you're offended, I have a constitutional right that protects me to use language as well. So as an elected official here, I have a due diligence and responsibility that if I speak several languages, I should optimize and maximize them for my viewership, for the people that are out there who probably only see like a circus being played out here and don't understand what is really being fought, asked, or inquired about, or what motions are being disseminated. Today, it is embarrassing. We had November fifth and Election Day. We didn't postpone our meeting. What does that show us of the election process? We had specific divisions in the city of Victorville that had the opportunity to go and vote. How many of us went? How many knew there was an election? How many of us know that on March third, 2020, there's another election on the primaries? How are we not respecting that process when we have a council meeting or we don't end it a little bit early for the fact of there's people that are going to go vote? We haven't done that, right? Regardless, just know that even if you don't have the ability to vote for whatever reason, you have influence over others, so you can cast ballots by mere influence of other individuals when you understand what's happening in your community. So I actually appreciate that you're here. My viewership is not just on these warm benches, which there's a lot of them that are quite empty, but there's also Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, LinkedIn, all of these that are transmitting this besides the city of Victorville's own transmission and other individuals that may be in here as well.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we had a couple to speak of regarding the neighborhood watch. Most, many of the areas have neighborhood watches. They do in our area. It's on the telephone. There are several meetings. They invite a police officer out. They've always been available on request. I don't know if that, the individuals have had the police officer out or not. The best that people can do, if every person polices their own property, then all property is policed. We can't have a policeman on every corner. We can't, we also need to report things that we see or hear or concerned about for the safety of our neighborhood. When we get every neighborhood thinking that way, then the whole city is going to be better off. So everyone has a role to play. And I know, I try to do my part in my neighborhood, but I absolutely know I don't do enough. And I hope everyone feels that way. This city has gotten to a point that I'm not sure how I can explain how it's gone so downhill. It isn't things this council has not done or can do. You cannot help when three or four families move into a house across the street and dump their trash over the fence and then claim that somebody else did it. It's a constant enforcement. I don't know where these people came from. I don't like it. They have rights, but they're rights in where my nose begins. And in many instances in the street, we have dogs that bark all night. And I've complained to the city manager that code enforcement and animal control has to start working nights and weekends and holidays because what happens when this stuff happens and nobody does anything about it, it's the character of the city. Go ahead and get a dog, let him bark because they won't do anything about it. Dump the trash because they won't do anything. We've got to start doing something about it and mean it. And if we're not willing to do that, it's not going to work. But if we do enforce those things and work with the neighborhoods and meet with the neighborhoods, issue the site, go to the judge, make them pay the five hundred. And if they claim that they're so poor they can't pay it, they shouldn't have committed the infraction in the first place. They have no sympathy for me on that. We'll eventually clean this area up and the neighborhoods up and the city up if we will make a commitment to do so. But we have to make the commitment, and I think this council has to set the example that they're willing to take the first step. And I hope this is part of the discussion.
Thank you. Rita?
I simply would like to say two things. Number one, don't forget November the eleventh. Remembered our veterans who have served and sacrificed for they have given us our freedom. And number two, I would like to announce that I was chosen as the Hispanic woman, well, Hispanic of the year. And I thank Victorville and the High Desert for that selection. And I'm very proud to serve you and very proud to represent you. Thank you.
Yes. All right, I have three minutes, so I'm going to speed read in the interest of getting everything out because I have so much to say, so it's going to have to be continued to the next meeting, unfortunately. There has been much discussion tonight about leaning in to members of our community, about reaching out to our neighbors to offer needed help. It's against this backdrop that I wish to thank three local vendors who stepped up for the Victorville Senior Center. The center was in need of a sidewalk so that seniors could safely get to the community garden that was already up and running, giving freely of their time and resources to install an eighty-foot sidewalk were Bob Harramit at High Desert Concrete Incorporated, John Hove at High Grade Materials, and Dale Kleindest from Respect Industries. I am grateful that our community has business members willing to give back. Several Fridays ago, I had the distinct privilege of going on a ride along with Deputy Demone. My husband went on a separate ride along with Deputy Romero. May I just say, I walked away from that experience with an increased appreciation for the difficult and challenging work of law enforcement. Within my first five minutes, Deputy Demone responded to a Code Three call, lights, sirens, and speed. The experience is certainly different from what is seen on TV. Throughout the night, I found myself thinking about the work of the city in new ways, given what actually happens on the streets, in businesses, and in homes. I could not have been assigned to a deputy that was a better teacher for me. Deputy Demone is a consummate professional who is very personable and has a passion for public safety. And if there was an argument for cloning, he'd be it. And Deputy Romero, my husband tells me, he's equally proficient. I am thankful to our local law enforcement who face unrelenting challenges every day, who often run to danger so that we all might be a little safer. As the addressing of crime in our community has always been one of my highest priorities, I am so very thankful that we are going to take this matter up at our next meeting. I regret to say that I won't be at the November eleventh celebration of our veterans. I'm going to be out of state, but I love the vets who sacrifice so much for our safety every day. And though I won't be here physically, I'm certainly going to be here in spirit. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I think it's my turn now. I just want to say that our Mojave River Walk was such, my voice, was such a great success. We had great attendance. It took twenty years in the making, but like the old saying, it's worth waiting for things. Things are worth waiting for, even if it takes twenty years. And this was worth it. And I just want to say that it was great. We enjoyed every bit of it, and it will continue to be enjoyed by families, not just the people that ride the bicycles or that go jogging. This is for families. And I encourage each and every one that can to at least take time to go and see what has been provided. It's wonderful, and I just feel so passionate and thankful that we finally brought this to completion, and we can enjoy it. And thank you very much. I believe that's all we have for this evening, so meeting is adjourned.